We're calling to order the February 22 meeting of the Concord Board, the Concord Select Board. And are we all?
We're all here.
We're all here.
We don't need a roll call.
So we don't need a roll call. And so we have, first item on the agenda is public comment on items that are not on the agenda. All right, in order of proximity to the front of the hall, please identify yourself and proceed.
My name's Janet Miller, 1647 Main Street. I'm, as you may know, the artificial turf fields behind the high school, the Doug White Fields are due for replacement. They've reached the end of their useful life. As planning goes forward to replace them, I would like the town to seriously consider replacing the artificial turf with natural grass. A lot of research has been done in recent years on how to manage grass well, with, starting with soil preparation and using drought resistant grasses that have been developed for playing fields. The problems with artificial turf are manifold. First of all, we need to protect our water quality as best we can, and so we should not be putting down artificial turf that contains PFAS, which are necessary for the extrusion of the grass blades. And there are other toxins in artificial turf infill, including neurotoxins, carcinogens, and endocrine disruptors. Another point is that there are no landfills in Massachusetts that will accept used artificial turf. So currently it's being shipped to Pennsylvania where it lies in fields and warehouses. Will that be an option next time around if the field is replaced with more artificial turf? And then there was microplastic pollution as the infill is carried away in hair and clothing and the grass blades wear down and the fragments are scattered in the wind. Finally, one sports proponents claim that artificial turf has more playable hours. Consideration must be given to the hours when artificial turf is not usable because of excessive heat.
Thank you. Stefan?
Thank you, Stefan Bader, 7 River Street. I have comments on two subjects tonight. The first is the residential tax exemption. Many folks have already received their credits on their real estate tax bill if they filed early, but many folks have not yet filed who do qualify. They're either unaware or they're confused or otherwise not up to speed yet. So as a result, this is reflected in a letter that I sent to the bridge as well. We formed a group, Concord Residents Connect, and we are reaching out to residents who would likely qualify for the exemption, haven't received it yet, haven't filed for it yet, to help them with that process so that by the time we get to April 1st, everyone who is eligible will have received their residential tax exemption. The other quick comment I wanted to make is on the disposition of the, by the state of the prison land, and I know that we are all in discussions and thoughts about how the town should proceed. I think it's imperative that the town come together and inform our legislative representatives in Beacon Hill of what the town would like to see in the legislation before it comes to a vote by the legislature. One way or another, a bill will come out of the legislature by July or August, and at that point, if we haven't conveyed our self-control or home control desires to the state, we may have missed the golden opportunity. Thank you.
Mary Weinberg in West Concord. I'm also working with Stefan to spread the word for those people who haven't yet filed their tax exemption. And like Stefan said, we've called it Concord Residents Connect. And Stefan created an email that is also ConcordResidentsConnect@AOL.com. And if you email this, you will get a PDF form of this flyer that we're also going to be leaving around town, but you can get this online and send it on to your friends. And that's how we're spreading out the word. The, came up with the RTE. Hopefully we will have this for many years, so if we get tired of saying residential tax exemption, maybe it'll be known as the RTE. And then quickly, I wrote a little poem for every household in Concord to fill out and submit a Concord Residential Tax Exemption Application is what our goal is all about. We'll do it through every creative way possible. We'll do the best we can to connect to each other, and that is our plan. And so it's on a low budget, so you'll have to forgive, not the too spiffy printing, but we're trying to do the best we can. Thank you, and thank you all for voting for this. Thank you.
No, thank you, and I think we ought to consider having a position of the Town Poet Laureate.
I accept.
Okay, any other public comment?
Hi, Tania Bartevian Galis. I'm going to ask Mr. Chair that you allow me to comment on the consent agenda either now or during your discussion on item C.
Well, this is a matter that's on the consent agenda, and it's a, it's a, just a ratification of action that has already been taken or implied by what we've done before. But if you want to speak on it for 30 seconds, go for it, and then we'll move on.
I appreciate it very much. The Concord Cultural District Committee, the Concord Center Cultural District Committee was actually not dissolved, so, and I would have commented if I had any idea at the time that that's what you were assuming that you were doing. You did form the task force in order to administer the grant for this year, which was urgent, and to advise how to move forward, which is understandable, but the committee, just because three members of it, their terms expired and they agreed to, you know, join this task force, doesn't mean the committee should be lost. That committee has a very rich charge that is way beyond the grant. It has, connects artists, it connects institutions, and in any case, it's a good resource for the task force to work with. So please let it stand until we are done with our work in the task force. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate this very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
My name's Lee Smith, 1836 Main Street. I am the Chair of the Concord Housing Development Corporation. I am speaking solely on my own behalf tonight. I'm rising to speak about the closure of MCI Concord. As you can probably agree with, this is a generational opportunity for the town to shape the redevelopment of approximately 50 to 70 acres of prime real estate to be developed in the best interests of this town. Two of the biggest needs that this town has are housing, including affordable housing, and sewer capacity, which is going to shape the future development of the town. And this land provides an opportunity both for housing and an existing wastewater treatment plant, which can be expanded, improved, what have you, for the purposes of the town while also continuing to serve the remaining prison property. It's my understanding that Representative Cataldo wants to amend the governor's pending budget legislation to include Concord's desired outcomes. This is the best opportunity that this town has to shape that outcome, and the time is now. Does the governor's office know that CHDC owns 12.8 acres of land contiguous to the prison property? Do they know that that land was deeded by DCAM on behalf of the Department of Corrections for affordable housing purposes and open space purposes? This is an existing precedent. I've heard that there's some concern about the example of wall fam and the closure of the state hospital. That land, going to that town and remaining largely undeveloped for far too long, but Concord is not wall fam. CHDC was poised to award to a developer that 12.8 acres for affordable housing purposes and open space purposes, literally on the eve of when this announcement came out. So CHDC decided to pause that and decide, can we do better? And the answer is yes. I've handed out what is truly a sketch plan by my hand and pen, showing what a possibility is for the contiguous land right behind the 12.8 acres owned by CHDC. My eyeball guesses that's roughly 10 acres. It's mostly undeveloped. It's outside the existing prison wall. And I think at a minimum, the town should be asking the state to deed that to the town or to CHDC for affordable housing purposes, for housing purposes in general, and to enable us to proceed with that in short order, as we are perfectly capable of doing. In addition, I would ask that that legislation combine those parcels with the 12.7 acres so that it's not limited just to affordable housing on the existing property, but spread out around the entire property and allow for a mix of housing from market rate down to affordable for hypothetically a range of 60% to 150% of AMI, all the way up to market rate. And there's a lot of area there for, to develop substantial numbers of housing, excuse me, housing units for the town. I'd like the town's leadership to make sure that the governor's office understands that opportunity and what we have before us, and not let this chance fly by by just sitting on our hands and letting the governor's office proceed without input from the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Peter Lowit, 5 Westvale Drive, speaking on my own behalf, not as a member of Concord Housing Development. I have over 20 years redeveloping the former Fort Devens, and, you know, my sense is, as Lee was saying, that this is a golden opportunity for us to sort of put forward our views. I think at a, the bare minimum, we should be asking for a town advisory board to assist the state in the redevelopment process. At a maximum, we should be more direct, as Lee was pointing out, in terms of the land for housing adjacent to the CHDC parcel. Again, this is an opportunity of a lifetime. You've got great knowledge within the community, and I hope you draw on it as you move forward with this process. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. We still have a few minutes left for any public comment, or any other further comment. If not, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a raised hand.
I'm sorry? Oh, we have a raised hand.
Raised hand on Zoom.
Sorry. Pamela Drip, Pamela, we have a raised hand for public comment.
Thank you. Pamela Drip, 13 Concord Green. I want to echo what Janet said and point out that by continuing to publicly own those artificial fields, we are opening ourselves up to a future of possible lawsuit, legal lawsuits, and that the cost of replacement of something so dangerous that cannot be recycled, despite the lies that the industry tells us, is also a danger. Those costs are not being considered, and we, it's irresponsible of us not to.
Thank you. All right, now, can we have a, have a second for the consent agenda?
Second.
All right.
Just call a vote. All in favor?
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Then we have committee nominations?
No, appointments.
Appointments. Okay. We have, we have one appointment, I believe.
Move to appoint Rob Almeda of 28 Comerford Road as a full member to the planning board for a term to expire May 31, 2029. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, then we go on to town manager's report.
Thank you and good evening. I think I'm going to claim back some of the minutes I ceded at the last meeting when I rushed through the town manager's report, because I want to pass along information that I think is helpful to you and to members of the public. Obviously, we have our first public hearing this evening in preparation for town meeting. We also have our first finance committee public hearing on Thursday, March 7. And the finance committee has changed up the order of warrant articles that it will take up on March 7. It's taking up all of the budget articles. So in past years, the town and school budgets have been split. Those are all coming before the finance committee on March 7. And I would encourage anybody interested in budgets to tune into that meeting. I wanted to note that our town archivist has advised us that the town plans of Concord from 1907 to 1910 are now available on the web. They are digitized. They were digitized through a grant that was provided through the CPC. And these plans are interesting because this, these are the earliest known plans to show individual property boundaries and owners of parcels. So that's a nice project that was completed. We have early voting that is underway, and I see some members of the audience who have been here helping with early voting that is going through this week. The deadline to apply for absentee voting is Monday, March 4, and town, the election day is on Tuesday, March 5. I wanted to announce the promotional appointments in the Police Department of Brian Goldman to the rank of captain and Keith Harrington to the rank of sergeant. Also wanted to make note of an interesting call that the Fire Department had. Usually in the weekly reports, you see the numbers of calls for service for both the police and fire, but on February 11, our Fire Department responded to a call of a woman delivering a baby. And so if I could just make note that dispatch received a call and sent ambulance 3, A3, and Engine 4 to the location. While they were en route, the dispatch provided pre-arrival medical instructions, and upon arrival, A3 and E4 crews delivered a baby girl successfully. I will note that each member of the Concord Fire Department and the dispatcher involved are now the proud recipients of the stork pin. A stork pin is bestowed upon members of police or fire departments by the chiefs for those involved in delivering babies, and I can tell you, Fire Chief Judge says he does not have one. The Fire Department received a grant in the amount of $13,900 from the Mass Fire Department to purchase equipment. So that was much appreciated. On the fire side, I wanted to announce the promotional appointment of Brad Furry to the rank of captain and Jimmy Foley to the rank of lieutenant. There's a lot of information in the report from last week about programs at the public library, which I would encourage you to take a look at. Wanted to mention that the library welcomes 74 new patrons to the CFPL family. Patrons received 126 museum passes. I would encourage anybody who's, who is not familiar with the museum pass program to look into that. It's a great opportunity to receive free or reduced museum passes with your library card. The library launched its new Aspen online catalog. They had 13 staff members participate in CPR and AED training this past week. Couple of nice events, nice events to announce at the COA. There was a spaghetti dinner and also a Valentine's Day event, a partnership with fourth graders at the Elkhart Elementary School that made handmade Valentine cards for seniors in town. Earlier today, the middle school building committee provided an update. I'd like to just take a minute to mention this because we don't often celebrate our successes. The middle school building committee continues to meet during construction to provide oversight of the budget and schedule. The project remains within budget and the cash flow is within forecasted levels. Contingency levels are at healthy, are healthy, as soft cost contingency remains at 96% of budget and the hard cost at 92%. So we're not using the budgeted contingencies, which is great. The project at this point is about 37% complete, and on average, there are about 75 workers on site each day. And current activities include exterior masonry, exterior framing, exterior, interior framing, and sheathing, and roof installation. So a lot of, a lot of work progressing quite nicely and according to the schedule. The next middle school building committee is on March 21 at 7:30 via Zoom, and all materials related to the work of the building committee are available online. Couple of other items I would like to mention. We have a greenhouse tour event coming up in conjunction with the Climate Action Committee, Concord Clean Comfort, CMLP, Mothers Out Front Concord, and the Sustainability Division. They are sponsoring a collection of Concord Green Home Tours on March 9 and 23. Each date will feature three residences that have taken the steps to electrify their homes and transportation, including heat pumps, solar panels, water heating, induction cooling, induction cooking, and electric vehicles. Participants will hear directly from homeowners about their experiences, and there is an opportunity, if you're interested, to register online, and you can find that on the town's sustainability webpage. I wanted to announce it at long last, our veterans parking space that this board worked on was dedicated recently out in front of the building with signage, so that is a nice opportunity and way to welcome veterans to our community. I wanted to mention that our Public Works Department is currently working with contractor Lazaro to, on the repair and reopening of Ministerial Drive that's been closed, probably for close to a month at this point. We do expect to have a repair timeline available later this week. And note that our Comcast negotiations are going well, and our consultant Sue Buskey will be presenting to this group a needs assessment at your next meeting. And I think I'd like to just take an opportunity to provide just a brief update on MCI Concord. I know we had a couple of speakers on that this evening, and we did receive a handful of emails today, and I think I'd like to respond a little bit to what's been happening. So it was about a month ago that we received notice from the state that the intention was to close MCI Concord. There was a comment this evening, and I did see it in emails about the town potentially sitting, sitting on its hands, and I would like to push back a little bit. Staff has been involved in several meetings with the Lieutenant Governor, with the Department of Corrections, with the Executive Office of Public Safety, have had contact with Mass Development, MAPC, DCAM. We have another meeting with DCAM scheduled for tomorrow, reaching out to our neighboring communities that have gone through this process in the past decade. And we are trying to understand what is before us, to gather information so that we can make a recommendation to the Select Board and to the community about the best way to move forward. We are on an extremely compressed timetable, so while somebody mentioned that the legislature, this legislation may pass, get passed in July, the request we've received from Representative Simon Cataldo is to have something to him within the next 10 days or so. That is a very complicating factor. This board needs to abide by the open meetings law, and trying to gather consensus from interested community members inside of less than a month is a daunting task. So the Select Board has a executive session scheduled on Wednesday this week to prepare for an agenda item at next week's Select Board meeting. So I think this group and town staff are moving as expeditiously as possible. I did hear somebody mention that the town was caught off guard with this. I can tell you, so was DCAM, the Department of Corrections, EOPS, I think our legislative delegation. So I just would like to convey at least to the members, community members here, that we are working on this. We are spending a lot of time on this and trying to bring the best information together for the Select Board to deliberate upon, so thank you. Oh, I've still got, I've still got five minutes.
Thank you. That covered a lot of what I intended to mention in my chair's remarks, but I would assure everyone that it's, this is very much all hands on deck, that if we're sitting on our hands, they're not getting very much warm by being sat on. So, and we're, as far as being caught off guard, it was the only thing that caught us off guard was the announcement from the, from our legislative representatives that this was the, included in the governor's budget, and that, and we were almost the last to know. So we're working on that very hard and putting a lot of effort into it. It's a complicated process because doing the right thing is actually probably going to be a long and deliberative process as to what uses should be made of this property, and we have to balance those against what the possibilities are in terms of the intentions of the state administration. So, but we still retain some control over the property regardless through the zoning function and the planning function that the town has, regardless of who ends up owning or controlling that property. So anyway, we have, we have a public hearing tonight on warrant articles that is scheduled for 7 o'clock, so let us just proceed with liaison reports until the appointed time arrives.
Well, mine is very brief. As Carrie said, the PEG negotiations are proceeding. We're working hard at that, and you'll be hearing more at your next meeting and the following two meetings after that. There are some quick actions required by the board that we need to do. The transport- The Transportation Committee and the 2229 Main Street Task Force are also very active and we're going to be hearing from them in the next few months. That's it for my report.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay. Since the last meeting, as Carrie mentioned, the middle school building committee has met again and that project does continue to be moving ahead on budget and making good progress. So we're very appreciative of those efforts. The, I also attended the CMLP board meeting on, on behalf of one of the other Select Board members. Probably the most visible thing that came out of that was a report that the vendor, with the streetlights that seem to be refusing to stay where we expect them to be, is being very responsive and has identified a fix that they're planning to deploy. So hopefully the streetlights will stop falling on, on, on the, on the road surface. There's also some interesting coordination going, taking place with the solar project and the middle school building project. And I think that both, both sides, CMLP as well as the, as the building team are, are working hard to make sure that those two adjacent projects are moving ahead together. There is a variance that's required from the ZBA to address the, the solar at the middle school that's coming up. Let's see. I just, we're going to hear about this later tonight at this hearing. In fact, it's, it's going to kick us off, but the Personnel Board has put forward a bylaw. What I wanted to report on now from that meeting is that there are some really, you know, unprecedented efforts going on to communicate with employees about the impact of the bylaw. Employees should understand that the Personnel Board is interested in their feedback and there'll be opportunities for them to talk about that as the implementation of that bylaw would be immediately following town meeting. So it's important that, that, that employees understand this about the bylaw and that we're communicating with them with respect to this very important employee population. And I think that's it for me since last meeting.
Mary?
I'll go next. First thing is the Economic Vitality Committee. As I've mentioned before, we're in the process of rewriting their charge. Several changes make that necessary. One is we have a Economic Vitality Director. The other is that I think MCI Concord brings some opportunities to us for more business development and we'd like the Economic Vitality Committee to participate in that conversation. So I had the two chairs, or the existing chair and the incoming chair and myself drafted a charge. I expect to bring that to the Select Board in about two weeks to get your input. I also attended the two, Mass DOT had two hearings on a study that they completed about the redesign of the Route 2 corridor. The corridor they're defining is from Lincoln to Lemonster. And they just completed a study. It's a study. It's not a design. It has no funding. So it's just a study and they're getting input from residents. And the problem is, is that the study was conducted before we all had any notice of the MCI closure. So the Select Board is drafting a letter to Mastot to say that specifically, that we think that, that that's a game changer and it should be included in any effort moving forward. The other thing that might happen with that letter is we might get input from the Transportation Advisory Committee that are concerned about some of the changes that were proposed for the area of Route 2 east of the Rotary. So that letter hopefully will be in front of the Select Board next week. I also went to the Finance Committee meeting. The elementary school has met the guideline and I hope they're committed to that guideline. The high school is still $125,000 over guideline and they're still working. The other thing that was discussed at Finance Committee meeting is the amenity building. And as you read in the bridge, they got a lot of pushback and were asked to go back and, and look at alternatives and redesign. I went to a meeting, the last meeting of Concord Can had a scientist by the name of Dr. Lynn Bennett, who gave a lot of really convincing evidence of the, the link between artificial turf and PFAS. And we know that we're going to have an article in front of town meeting this year to spend something like, what, 40, 50 million for a filtration plant for the water at Nagog to filter out PFAS. And yet we still have artificial turf uphill at the, at the high school. So it seems kind of silly to be putting artificial turf uphill and having to filter it out downhill. So that's something to keep in mind when we think about what to do about the artificial turf. The Planning Board has three things to talk about. The property that was Paparazzi at 768 Elm Street, they were granted approval. That particular property will have two restaurants, two restaurants of 2,500 square feet, one restaurant of 5,000 square feet, and a bank. So they were granted approval with conditions. So there'll be four tenants over there at the former Paparazzi. I think it's one floor. Is it one floor, Linda? It's, it's a one-story building. The scenic road bylaw rules and regs were finalized between the Planning Board and the DPW. That was good news. And then the other thing they looked at was 166 Comm Ave, which is the old gas station in West Concord. That applicant will return to the Planning Board on April 2nd. Right now it's 10 residential units, one retail space. Out of those 10 residential, we'll have three affordable and 14 parking spaces. And I just wanted to, before, while I still have the microphone, I just wanted to make one comment that when people, when we're talking about MCI Concord, when I talk to people and I hear about what people would like to see happen there, I think it's important that we all understand that the town doesn't own that land. So I, I think a lot of people think we own that and so we have a large site. We don't own that. That's owned by the state. So it's important to, to understand that. Thank you.
Linda?
At the last CPC meeting, they spent a fair amount of time looking at their annual plan for update. That's routine that they do every year.
At the last CPC meeting, the committee spent a fair amount of time looking at their annual plan for update and for changes that needed to be made there. And this is something that they do annually as opposed to every five years is recommended. And it's a good thing because there's always a significant number of changes even within a year. The ZBA, last ZBA meeting spent a great deal of time on the Novo project. And a number of concerns were voiced to the various representatives from the Novo Riverside Commons project. They included still some concern about traffic, about the massive scale of the building and just how it's being presented in terms of mass. And other recommendations were made by various committees for the Novo developers and people working on that project to consider. They have extended the date to April 1 as the, to close the public hearing for the Novo Riverside project. And that's significant. There will be a number of meetings in the interim on that project. Also attended the Planning Board meeting and of significance, and Mary already mentioned this, 166 Commonwealth Avenue project is going forward. It's made considerable progress. And at their next meeting, they intend to consider a draft letter of conditions. So that project has really moved along and I expect there may be a decision at the next Caught the first part of the Council on Aging meeting because there was a conflict with another meeting right on the heels of that. I'll just comment there that they are in the process of helping with the interviews to hire a new executive director. And they're already at the second interview stage and the, some of the board members on the COA will be participating both in, in that second stage as well as the next The Concord Municipal Housing Trust met and as always, they have a great deal of information to go over. I guess the, like all other committees in town, the MCI closing was, took up much of the conversation to the extent that we had information available to us at the time. I think we'll be looking forward to, they will be looking forward to our next Select Board deliberations on this item. I would also say that in terms of the CMAT Housing Production Plan, the MCI property was not anticipated. So that's something that the trust will be taking up. And I think that'll be the highlights there. There was a joint meeting of the Historic Commission and the HDC to discuss with the consultants the next level of the Historic Preservation Plan that those committees are working on. And the consultants from Heritage Strategies were seeking from commission members from both of those groups, their input on a number of items that the consultants are trying to make recommendations on. And I think I'll end it there.
Thank you. Are there any further commentary reports from the board? The only other item of business on our agenda is the public hearing on the warrant articles, which is on the agenda for seven o'clock. And I guess maybe we should take a brief recess.
We should.
Let's have a brief recess and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock to start with Article Four to ratify the personnel board classification action. So.
Stretch.
Stretch. Right. It's probably going to, once we get going again, it will probably be a while, so make it a good stretch.
Yeah.
All right, let's start with the, let's reconvene the, the meeting and start with the public hearing on the warrant articles.
I have to move. I have to make an issue.
You do? Okay. Mary's going to make an issue. Everyone listen carefully.
Okay. Move to open the Select Board public hearing for annual town meeting warrant articles. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good.
Thank you. The hearing is now open, right?
Yes.
And so let me just announce at the beginning of this hearing, in a manner similar, we have a lot of ground to cover, 16 articles. I hope that some, I, I know that some will take longer and hopefully some will take less. But if we, the hypothetical time for each one we've allowed is 10 minutes. And as we, as we frequently do at town meeting, I'm announcing at the beginning that we will take up no new business after 10 o'clock tonight. And any, any items that we do not get to, we will carry over the hearing to our next meeting on March 4th. All right. Having said that, let's start with Article Four, Ratify Personnel Board Classification Actions.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right? And you can hear me online? Okay. Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Cobbs, 31 Pondview Lane, and I'm here representing the Personnel Board. I'll be presenting three articles for the warrant for 2024 town meeting. And I thank you for your time and consideration of these three articles. I think I can do all three within 10 minutes, so I'll save us a little time at the beginning and maybe have more time for questions if there are. So for Article Four, Article Four is meant to ratify the Personnel Board classification actions that have been voted on throughout the year. Throughout the year, the Personnel Board approves temporary changes in the classification and compensation plans. These temporary measures are pending final ratification at the subsequent town meeting. These changes include adding, deleting a job title, assigning a title to a salary range, reassigning titles from one salary range to another. And under the personnel bylaw, all decisions taken at Personnel Board meetings throughout the year must be then brought for final approval at town meeting. Thus Article Four. Note that there will be continued actions to the classification and compensation plan that the Personnel Board will vote on between now and the date of the 2024 annual town meeting. We expect that these changes will also be submitted to town meeting and will be filed with the town clerk and amended details to be represented at the town meeting. And please note an important fact that these actions do not confirm or confer funding for these positions. Funding is subject to the limitations of approval, approved general fund and enterprise fund budgets. Such actions are out of scope for the Personnel Board. Okay? So if I may, I'd like to point out that the HR team, including our town manager, assistant town manager, and interim HR director have been working closely with all the departments to understand what their organizational needs are. Last week, the Personnel Board approved a change at the BD Center where the team found an appropriate solution to the annual challenge to securing enough lifeguards for the town. This has been a problem since COVID. They're encouraging 15-year-olds and above to apply for a swim aid positions at minimum wage where they can take the training for lifeguards. Upon completion of that training, the swim aid would be reimbursed for the training class fees and would be all ready to serve as lifeguards at the BD Center. This represents real teamwork and finding reasonable win-win solutions. And I really appreciate all the efforts of our town government that do that. This concludes for Article Four. And I guess I'll open for questions. Is that? Yeah?
Does Mark have any questions, Elizabeth?
Any questions online or?
What I, what I should add is that for most of these articles we're discussing, there are materials that are online with the meeting materials for the Select Board for tonight's meeting. And if you go to the Select Board, especially space on the, on the, on the government page and you click on that, you will get another row of items that's called meeting materials with the date of the meeting in question so that you can have a chance to review if you haven't already the materials that have been presented. The Personnel Board has a, quite a thick presentation. So if you want to go home and think about it, you can do that afterward.
And we'd be happy from the Personnel Board as well to be available for questions if they come up afterward.
Hmm?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry?
Edward Perry, 362 Bedford Street. Ms. Cobb, do I understand that the one through eight are the classifications that were approved by the Personnel Board prior to the closing of the warrant? And you are, you've added at least swim aid as a number nine, is that right? Have you added any others? And congratulations on adding the swim aid. I think that's a great step for BD Center and certainly supports our swim team that did so well last week. But could, is that a number nine that you've added?
Yes.
Are there others that you've added too?
Thank you for that question. Yes. And what we'll be doing is we have regular meetings every month and we will continue to work with the HR department, the assistant town manager, and the town manager to
into the class and comp plan to ensure continuity across all the departments in the town with non-union regular employees. So each department is making their own decisions, and then the town leadership is looking across those departments and ensuring that they're all aligned under the same Classification and Compensation Plan. And this year, we're asking the town to approve the changes to positions as outlined in Article Four, which are incorporated into that CNC plan that was adopted in July 2023. And thank you. That's my comments on Article Five. Are there any questions?
Janet Walker. And my question is, is there no reference to lack of union representation to these positions you were talking about?
I'm, I'm sorry.
You mentioned something about these are non-union positions?
That's right. That's right. The Personnel Board is only overseeing non-union regular employee positions for the town. We don't have anything to do with employees that are unionized. Those are under a different structure, and the Personnel Board is limited to those that are non-union positions.
All right. And what structure is that for the non-union?
I'm sorry, it couldn't be?
What structure is that for the others that are not covered?
Okay, so those, and this is our HR support in the corner helping me out there. They, they are under collective bargaining agreements, and the Personnel Board doesn't handle the financing of allocating funds to the positions of the non-union regular employees.
So it's the Personnel Board, you said?
That's right, the Personnel Board. And we have all our minutes and agendas that are updated on our site, and I'd be happy to talk to you about where you can find out more information about the, the work of the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We have, you have one more?
Okay. Yep, we have one last.
I think this is getting very economical. You're getting, getting us through three articles without taking half an hour.
That's, that's true. That's true. Okay, but I'm happy to take any questions tonight or afterward, because we consider this work really important on the Personnel Board, and we've been excited to bring these articles forward this year. So Article Six is meant to ratify the amendments to the Personnel Bylaw as presented in the warrant for annual town meeting. So you'll have that in the materials. And I'll, I'd like to give a bit of context. In 2021, the Select Board convened what was called the Personnel Study Task Force. That task force was to complete a comprehensive review of the bylaw for the Personnel Board, among many other duties. Included in the review was a survey of employees with over fifty percent participation, as well as multiple employee focus groups. They concluded that the bylaw should be updated, and that current policies, as they stood, were confusing, some were missing, and others were inconsistent with the bylaw as it stood. So from that point forward, the Personnel Board has endeavored to really take that seriously and respond to the Personnel Study Task Force and the work that they did to summarize the issues. Okay, so the bylaw amendment streamlines and modernizes the Personnel Bylaw, clarifies the roles of those, these involved, and allows for the development of a comprehensive policy manual for town employees, consistent with what the Personnel Study Task Force recommendations were. Okay? As a result of these updates, the main focus, the non-wage provisions, would no longer require town meeting approval to change or update those provisions. Okay, those are non-wage provisions, but they would remain the responsibility of the town manager, the HR director, and the Personnel Board. Okay? These non-wage provisions would include, but not be limited to, in training status, hours of work, pay policies, sick leave, holiday pay leave, vacation leave, bereavement leave, personnel leave, military and jury duty, unpaid absences, interruption of employment, and leave for temporary and limited status employees. Okay, again, these are all for the non-wage, the, the non-union regular employees of the town. The reason to seek this change in the bylaw is to ensure that the town of Concord can update these non-wage provisions in a timely manner to comply with changes in state or federal requirements and/or local circumstances. So what was happening was, we'd have to wait till town meeting could ratify a change for, for the non-union regular employees to have a new schedule for vacations or any of the other non-wage lists that I just read out to you. Okay? So the reason, okay, so I, sorry. All select, all sections of the existing bylaw that are not included in the proposed bylaw will become part of the town's policies and procedures as Personnel Policy and Procedure Number Forty-three immediately upon approval of the proposed bylaw at town meeting. So we wanted to do that in a streamlined approach, so there wouldn't be any disruption. Employees have received notice of this, and were given the opportunity to attend the Personnel Board's February meeting, in addition to having email communications with the HR team. And this is something Mark Howell mentioned at the Select Board meeting earlier. There has been a lot of communication, and there have been questions and answers going back and forth by email, and also some questions that came to our meeting last week of the Personnel Board. Okay, so changes to the bylaw have been communicated to all the non-union regular employees. The co-chairs of the Personnel Board will also meet with members of the Personnel Study Task Force later this week. And I wanted to mention that while the PSTF or Task Force has been disbanded, this group represents a real strong brain trust of the Personnel Board issues, and will continue to be an asset, providing advice, historical perspective, and deep knowledge of the bylaw and the ongoing operation of the Personnel Board. So we appreciate how active members of the town and the community are in making sure that we are running a steady ship. And with these comments, I conclude my remarks to the Personnel Board. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Liz, and the whole Personnel Board for this tremendous amount of work to do these bylaws. It's way overdue, and I know it took several years. I was the liaison and watched. It was painful at times, and I really want to thank you. I have three questions about it. First of all, what is your expected timeframe of when the employee handbook might be ready?
So, that's a very important question. The first thing is that what is changed in the bylaw, as I mentioned, will be immediately implemented in Policy Forty-three. So that will be, you know, continue a service in that area. For the full handbook to go forward, I think we are looking at about six more months to completion. So we've had a lot of support with the interim HR director staying on to complete that work and make sure that we can do that in a timely manner. All of it won't be ready for town meeting, but those, those policies will be in a complete handbook, and the goal is that all of the non-union regular employees will have that handbook easily accessible, and will have a one-stop place to go and really understand what they need to do to be a full, confident employee of the town.
That's terrific. Six months is really terrific. So my next question ties into what you were saying. Can you explain what is PPP Number Forty-three? How does it work? Who writes it? Who manages it?
Sure. So PPP, Personnel Policy and Procedure Number Forty-three, has been drafted fully by our interim HR director and support across all the departments, if I understand correctly. So that the department chairs are working to ensure that, that all of this is done in a balanced way, and that there's no procedural or bureaucratic approach that doesn't understand the practicalities of the, the regular daily needs of employees. So there's been a lot of input on that one in particular, and we did have some folks show up last week at the Personnel Board, and they were encouraging us to understand that there had been a great deal of reach out by town manager, assistant town manager, and the HR interim director, Kimberly Crum.
So you're saying that, I think, I believe it's Jessica is drafting it, and then department heads are having input? And so in the future, once it's all drafted, and there's changes to be made, and also the management of all the, you know, vacation rules, and et cetera, et cetera?
Yep.
That will also be done by the HR director, or how will it work?
Well, so I, I think I mentioned in the note that the Personnel Board would stay involved and in dialogue with the HR department to ensure that we are, you know, supportive of what is going on, and there'll be some collaboration. The Personnel Board, I have to say, I'm not a specific HR expert, but we have many of them on the board at this point, so it's a wonderful group of people with really nice skill set to help us manage, you know, from town government folks to folks in a business setting, that really understand the HR rules and regulations of the state of Massachusetts. So that's where we're able to move now with these changes that we've come with the, the bylaw, et cetera, to really helping on a strategic level to support the town government.
Okay. So I have a suggestion on if you have a handout at town meeting, or, or in your presentation, when you refer to PPP Number Forty-three at town meeting, that you just explain a little bit more for people.
Sure.
And then my last question is, what is the process going to be for grading new positions, or if a supervisor comes in, they want their person to go up a grade? How is that whole process going to work?
I'm going to say a few things, and then Jess, I'll make, make sure you, I got it all right, okay? So the Classification and Compensation Plan that was approved last year at town meeting is a really comprehensive look, and that's where you get that cross-department, that everything is streamlined, and those job descriptions that are really being pulled together, reviewed, revamped where needed, will assure that across those departments, you have continuity of the class and compensation plan. That sets out salary ranges, levels for jobs, and so forth.
Right, right. So just to save time, I understand that who will be, let's say a supervisor comes in, they have a new position, or, you know, they think their employees should go to the next grade. Who is going to do the work to, will the Personnel Board be involved? Will it be the HR director?
Yeah. So the process is that it does go, I believe, through HR and the department chairs, and then there's consideration, discussion about how it fits in with the Classification and Compensation Plan. And then after those agreements are reviewed with the town manager, they will come to the Personnel Board, and they'll be described and explained to us so that we understand how they're fitting in that overall plan. Did I miss anything? Yeah. Yeah, you're right. And then the last step is that the Personnel Board actually votes on those positions, and then you'd see them at the next town meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So those, those come back to the town.
Thank you.
I have a question. Yep. Again, thank you for all the work on this. You mentioned that there have been a number of questions and answers that have been provided to employees. Has that been gathered in one location so that it can be accessed by all the employees? And also by others who would like to see what the nature of those questions have been?
That's a good point. I think for, just on the bylaw, was what I was referring to about question and answer on the changes to the bylaw, and I don't think that those have been made in a public statement.
Just the comments that were made back?
Yeah, just, just what was brought to the Personnel Board meeting, and those are in the, the minutes, and they're on the, the video. But there hasn't been a comprehensive Q and A presentation from employees on, on the bylaw. I think as we go forward, though, it would be important to look at how the handbook goes forward, and how, you know, what questions come, come from employees as they understand the comprehensive handbook. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I think it's important, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. There's a question over here.
Yes. Hi, Henry Crum. Joe Lauren, Southfield Road. I just wanted to make sure I understood a couple of things, back to the reclassification. So when you're reclassifying, you're regrading, so to speak, different roles, and I'm guessing you're also adjusting salary bands and pay bands accordingly.
Yes.
Is that correct? My question is, have you done an assessment of, or has someone done the, an assessment of the financial impact that's going to have? Because my guess is the salary bands are going up, not down, and so is there an assessment of what that knock-on cost will be?
That, that process certainly occurs, but that is not the purview of the Personnel Board. So what we look at with the Classification and Compensation Plan that was fully revamped last year is salary ranges, not salaries. And those ranges in the CNC plan were approved as of last town meeting, as part of that new CNC plan and the, the ranges. After that, it goes over, I believe, to FinCon. Is that? Yeah.
Right. It seems to me there's just a little disconnect there, right? That if we approve a, a change in salary bands, we know will have a financial impact, but we don't know what that financial impact is before we approve these increased adjustments. It's, right, how, how do you make, I guess I looked at the Select Board, how do you make a decision, or how will the town make a decision at town meeting?
Yep.
Without understanding what the financial impact will be?
Yeah, and I'm going to have to turn that over.
Or will that be available at town meeting?
I'm going to have to turn that over to the town manager, but again, yeah. Carrie, do you want to get into that, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, we were just deciding who was, who was going to respond, so I think.
The, the comment I would make is, any reclassification of a position has to be plugged into an existing classification. I think you probably understand that. So we're not creating new, new bands. The, the financial impact, that is part of the budget process, and so we would have to be evaluating the impact of any classifications as we're going through the budget process and, and putting a budget together.
So I, I think if I could add one thing, you're, you're assuming that there's one process that finishes, and then it goes to another, and that's not the way the town government uses the work that the Personnel Board is supporting. They are working together with the HR department as the bands are reconsidered, and as town manager stated, they're not completely new and, and untethered decisions, either on the ranges, or on then how they decide to fill those positions.
So they, so it's then safe to assume that at town meeting, that an, an understanding of that financial impact will be available so people can vote according, can consider that as they're voting for these warrants? I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just trying to understand how we vote on something that's going to have a financial impact without knowing what.
I, I think the simple answer is that before anybody moves from a position or a rate, that before that happens, there has to be.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to turn that over.
Or will that be available at town meeting?
I'm going to have to turn that over to the Town Manager, but again, yeah. Carrie, do you want to get into that, or?
Sorry, we were just deciding who was going to respond, so I think.
The comment I would make is, any reclassification of a position has to be plugged into an existing classification. I think you probably understand that. So we're not creating new bands. The financial impact, that is part of the budget process. And so we would have to be evaluating the impact of any classifications as we're going through the budget process and putting a budget together.
So I think if I could add one thing, you're assuming that there's one process that finishes, and then it goes to another. And that's not the way the town government uses the work that the Personnel Board is supporting. They are working together with the HR Department as the bands are reconsidered. And as Town Manager stated, they're not completely new and untethered decisions, either on the ranges or on then how they decide to fill those positions.
So it's then safe to assume that at town meeting, that an understanding of that financial impact will be available so people can vote according, can consider that as they're voting for these warrants? I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just trying to understand how we vote on something that's going to have a financial impact without knowing what.
I think the simple answer is that before anybody moves from a position or a rate, that before that happens, there has to be a determination that the budget has provided for it.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, the actual impact of the changes are really hashed out through the budget process, which funds the actual people in the actual positions. So the ranges that are identified in the Class and Compensation Plan are actually defined, designed to try to make sure that we're paying competitive ranges.
Sure.
And we understand what the cost of any particular type of position is based on the skills, based on the factors that go into that. And what has happened in the last year is that for the first time in about 15 years, an actual comprehensive reclassification of all positions took place. So we have a high level of confidence now, which we did not have before, that our Classification and Compensation Plan is consistently implementing the level of strategic policies that we want to have in that marketplace. And so now what we're seeing is a next step of that, which is really trying to make sure that we've positioned ourselves so that we don't get so far behind. And that, the article that we're addressing right now is a new Personnel Bylaw, which is designed to streamline and try and ensure that the Personnel Board has an ongoing role in maintaining that Class and Comp Study, Class and Compensation Plan in a way that will allow us to not sort of drift away from its usefulness, which is frankly what had happened before.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Edward Perry, 362 Bedford Street. Ms. Crum, one of the strong recommendations of the Task Force was trying to have the HR Department and the Personnel Committee put together a dashboard so that the Town Manager, who has been doing some terrific hiring, can show the NISL employees across the Commonwealth that Concord is at the top of the pile, as some of us who've been here for a few years expect that we are. You and Mr. Maratchek have done a great job of working on such a dashboard. Could you explain that and how you and the Town Manager and the HR Department will be able to use the length of service some of our employees have been on staff to demonstrate that Concord is a good place to work? Thank you.
Sure. I'm going to indulge myself in being able to answer this. The Personnel Board has done a wonderful job, I think, in working with the HR Department in the town and the Town Manager to really embrace what we could do for the town, which is really more strategic analysis of the structure of things, and that gets to the dashboard. So what we were trying to do with that dashboard is to have, at least on a quarterly basis, some understanding of length of employees, looking at gender breakdowns, looking at race and ethnicity, looking at a lot of different ways of how our employees have been working in the town. And we're continuing to tweak that dashboard. It is in all of minutes. Our meeting last week in particular, we had a new dashboard that gave us a bit more information to understand how we're balancing and working with the town employees and where their compensation levels are and so forth. So I think it's really important to be data-driven, and that's what we were trying to do. And I think that was also a recommendation of the PS, the Personnel Study Task Force. And we've really embraced that as an important factor that can help us as a Personnel Board to also help the town and the government, the governance of the HR Department. So we've had some wonderful discussions around the dashboard that we have, and we're continuing to develop that. And any comments or thoughts you have, if you get a chance to look at that dashboard and would recommend to us, we'd be really eager to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. And so now you've run a little bit over, but that's, I think that's the way it should be, because the amount of time we spend on things should in some way be at least slightly proportional to the amount of money and resources that are involved. So this is a big item, and thank you very much for making us look good.
Thank you all.
So now we go to Alan, and I assume this is going to be very, very expeditious as to whether or not we accept easements.
Thank you, Chair. Alan Cathcart, Director, Concord Public Works. Article 18 is, Chairman Dane mentioned, a housekeeping item. In essence, it's a article that allows for town meeting to authorize a Select Board to vote to accept easements the town obtains through a period of time. Easement is the right to use someone else's property without possessing it for the purpose described in the easement agreement. Throughout the year, staff is regularly involved with reviewing and involved with activities, a construction development, which will require a negotiation with an abutter, private property owner, for the use of their property for a water conveyance, a water main, could be an electric conveyance, sometimes sidewalks. You will meander and sort of encroach into a private property in the interest of protecting a shade tree or something, we may want to negotiate an easement. This action is for, again, a kind of mechanics, allowing staff to take care of the technical aspect throughout the year. Often it's fairly time-sensitive, given the developer, development interests. And there is, this article is to cover those easements where there is no fee associated with that. You know, I know, sort of, we talked finance in the last articles. This is where there's no fee involved. So in essence, that's the roll-up. I'm here to answer any questions, entertain any comments.
I have a quick question, Alan. Thank you for this. When you say that it will be no fee or no cost to the town, is there any possibility that it could be a cost to an enterprise fund?
No, thank you for calling that out. With the enterprise fund, this also enables the Select Board to act for utility easements for the enterprise, for instance, the water.
Right.
But there's no monies exchanged for that. An example, Sunnyside Road Development required a water main loop. The loop was going to be accepted by the town, the actual main itself, but it required cross-country through private property to create the water loop. And so at no cost, it's just the ability to have access to that and maintain the main.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Hearing none. We'll move on to Article 22.
No sound, don't sound. Thank you. Okay, so to provide a little bit of context, the DEI Commission conducted a town-wide survey last year to inform our activities and initiatives. And based on the results, which were presented to both the general public and the Select Board, we chose to focus our efforts on two communities, the BIPOC community and the LGBTQ+ plus. And our efforts are directed towards strengthening the inclusion of both communities in town. Through the different activities that are listed on the slide, we put an action plan together that enhances and showcases their identity and their stories, and that will allow the town to, you know, be, get trained on what diversity and inclusion means and how we can provide a safer and better place for both communities. With that context, I'll pass the microphone over to my co-chair, Joe.
This is Andrea Fonserada, and Joe Palumbo are the co-chairs of the Town of Concord's DEI Commission. As Andrea said, this focus that grew out of the survey and the data led us to finding ways to honor and stand up for and promote the Black, Indigenous, and people of color in our town. One of the ways we've done that this year is back this December, we brought forward a town, this article. The article says, and I know you've read it, but I'll just read it aloud for those who may not have heard it before, "To determine whether the town will urge the Select Board and the School Committee as outlined in Town of Concord Administrative Policy and Procedures Number 43," which outlines a policy for the naming of public buildings, "to approve the naming of the publicly-owned building currently under construction at 923 Old Mamba Road as Ellen Garrison Middle School were taking any action relative thereto." And the reasons why we want to make sure we're honoring this Black Concordian is, as we've said many times, Black citizens have been a part of Concord for over nearly 400 years. And there's great power in, when communities think about how they want to name buildings. We know that Ellen Garrison was born in Concord. She's the daughter and granddaughter of a man named Caesar Robbins, who was a patriot of color. He fought in the American Revolution, and there's some evidence he fought on the Old North Bridge on April 19th, 1775. Ellen went to Concord Public Schools and graduated Concord Public Schools. She became a teacher and spent her life dedicated to teaching those recently emancipated to learn how to read and write. That brought her all the way across the country. She, in 1866, tested the Civil Rights Act of 1866 by sitting in a white-only women's waiting area and being promptly and forcibly thrown out. And then she went back a second time to make sure that they were able to build a case. In 19, in the 50s, when Rosa Parks lawyers put together the case for Rosa Parks, they go back and they cite precedents. One of the cases they cite is Ellen and her co-teacher who were thrown out in 1866. So she had an amazing amount of power. And if you go to that next slide, we know that if this school was named after Ellen Garrison, it would be the first public building in the town of Concord to be named after a person of color in nearly 400 years. Ellen's a patriot, and she's a fighter for democracy and freedom, which we know what Concord's all about. So we end with this slide of these pictures here, just to remind ourselves that the Garrison family has been a part of Concord for years. The left-hand picture next to Ellen, that's her father, Jack Garrison. He was an escaped enslaved man that came up and made his life here in Concord, lived to be 92. He's holding a cane because he's the oldest man in Concord, and he was given that cane. And it's still in the Concord Museum if you want to go see it. And what's super interesting is, on the right is a picture of her brother, John. John also went to Concord Public Schools. Oh, by the way, the school they went to is right across the street, the Masonic Temple. That's where those kids went to school. When John went to school there, whereas Ellen went out and saw the world, John stayed right here in Concord. He spent his whole life here in Concord. In fact, he was the superintendent of this very building we're in. He worked here for 15 years as a town employee, and that's why we have his picture, because they took pictures. They didn't have a Personnel Task Force, but they took pictures of every town employee. So that's sort of the background. I mean, but bottom line is, in 2010, in the 2010 census, about 9 million people identified themselves as persons of color. In the 2020 census, that's gone up to 33 million people identifying themselves as persons of color. Concord itself now has 20% of its student body identify as students of color. So we're getting this beauty and this diversity that's ahead of us. So we really hope that we're, have such an opportunity to enjoy the next 50 years. We want to build a school that really reflects the next 50 years. And with that, we'll take comments, questions, and be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments from the Board?
I have a comment from Michael Williams, Sudbury Road.
Oh.
I have a comment, Michael Williams, Sudbury Road.
Do you give your name and?
Michael Williams, Sudbury Road.
Thank you.
Been resident of Concord for 32 years. We've raised four kids here. All four of our children have gone through the public school system. I'm pleased to say that we have a community of supportive neighbors and friends. Certainly, over the past 32 years, Concord has become much more diverse than it was when we first came here. It has not been come more welcoming. Now, you don't have to take my word for it. It's evidenced by what's in the press. You've seen in The Bridge and in The Globe, the issue of a person of color that was actually raised here in Concord, that while walking through downtown in the evening was stopped. Just this past fall, a child of color in our middle schools was assaulted several times. It's reported both in The Globe and in The Bridge, and I believe is currently being looked at by the district attorney. I can also attest to issues of that nature during our 32-year tenure in town. Now, with that as a backdrop.
Excuse me, can you just speak right next to the microphone? Thanks a lot, the sound is bad.
With that as a backdrop, the last Juneteenth celebration at the Robbins House, I was overjoyed to find out that Ellen Garrison existed. I didn't know that before. I was further shocked, amazed, and pleased to find out that her name was offered as a possible name for our new middle school. That joy spurred my wife and I to go to a school committee meeting last month. It's been 20 years since our kids were in the school system here. I was heartened by this potential. I was profoundly disappointed by the tenor of the debate of the school committee and their final vote. So we have any number of buildings and public spaces named for luminaries of this area. By luck of birth, by Ellen's grit, we have this incredible gift. We have a Black Concordian born here, raised here, educated in our school systems. Shows that New England spunk in her spine, that she wanted to stand up in her progressive nature at 12 years old. And that's all at the Robbins House, actually. We have all of this given to us. We have an opportunity to do something with it. She went on, dedicated her life to teaching. She taught specifically freed people throughout the country. She traveled from here to Rhode Island, to the Carolinas, to Kansas. And at 60, she dies in California, in her 60s, she dies in California. Altadena can recognize, her adopted city can recognize her as a luminary that fought for freedom and civil rights. And Concord is, hmm, so I'm left, what's the rub here? Why is this such a difficult ask? We get concerned over how coarse the nature of discourse here is in our nation. We have an opportunity to make a statement. And I'm not naive enough to think that this statement is all that needs to be done and things will be right. No, we'll need to follow it up with the work necessary to nurture change. But we are revealed not by what we say, but by what we do. I ask you as a friend and a neighbor, what are we prepared to do? How do we want to stand? How do we want to be revealed? How do we want to be seen? Thanks for your time.
Kara Angeloni, Central Street. I've had the great opportunity to observe this process over the last couple of months. And what has stood out to me the most is not only learning more about Ellen Garrison's story, but also hearing the stories of the people of color in this town who have spoken up and said just how much this would mean to their children. I can't move past that without speaking up in their honor. I'm just looking at my notes here. I'm just looking at my notes here. Part of the process, too, I've observed, is people choosing comfort, people choosing the status quo over taking the leap forward, an act that would make people otherwise who would not feel welcome in this town feel a sense of belonging. I'm here to encourage the town to lean into something that may make people feel uncomfortable. I'm a teacher, and I know that that's where learning happens, and where better of a place to make that example set is in our schools. I urge the town to make this small but mighty step. Thank you.
Thank you. And by the way, please, let's not have applause or outbursts on behalf of any statements that we make here.
Hi, Wendy Raveli, 42 Both Street. So, Joe, this has been a good presentation, and thank you. I've listened to many of these presentations about Ellen Garrison, and it's quite commendable.
Excuse me, could you please step to the mic?
Sorry, you can't hear? Okay, sorry. So my question, actually, Joe, is to you. Ellen Garrison is quite a commendable individual and is worthy of being named, but the school committee has made a decision and voted against this. So what is your ask of this, under this article now? What do you expect to have happen?
Certainly. That's an excellent question, and I appreciate it. APP 43, which was passed in 1990, is the, what's on the books in the town for the naming of a public building. When we initially began this conversation last spring, the chair of the Select Board pointed us to APP 43 as the place to look for the process. So the first step in that process was for the school committee to hold a hearing. So over the spring and summer, we tried to meet with, we did meet with members of the school committee and the superintendent to see if a hearing process would be done so it could be referred to the Select Board for their ultimate decision. At first, there was no interest on the part of the school committee or the superintendent to hold such a hearing. So this fall, the DEI Commission, after ask from the Robbins House, said, well, let's put it on the town warrant and let the town have a hearing, like get their feedback, see what the town thinks. In December of this year, the school committee created a process for the naming, and so it created sort of two parallel tracks going on at the same time. Ultimately, we know that's something that the Select Board and the school committee will work out together. What we want to do is provide the folks in Concord, the citizens of Concord, but just a chance to have their opinion said. Because we know if you read the article, it's just an urge. It's just to urge the Select Board and the school committee to do ultimately what they believe is the right thing to do. I think what we keep coming back to is, when the middle school was first going to be built, the school committee in the town came to the citizens and said, vote on this at town meeting. And then a second time, when they needed to, for the funding, the school committee and the Select Board came to the citizens at town meeting and said, will you vote on funding? And then when they needed a little more money, they came back a third time. So the towns voted three times already on the funding of this building. It only seems logical that we at least let the town vote once on what the name should be. And the town might end up deciding the same thing the school committee does, and they might not. So that's kind of the thinking behind it. There's nothing purer than pure democracy. And in a town that celebrates democracy and in a town that talks about the expansion of human freedom, why not let the citizens vote? Do they want to honor one of their greatest champions of the expansion of human freedom? And that's up to the citizens, not up to us.
My name's Alexa Anderson. I live at 14 Park Lane. So I just have a quick statement to make. This past fall, the Concord--
Alexa, are you speaking?
Am I not doing good?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Are you speaking as a chair?
I am not. I'm just giving a history lesson, I guess. This past fall, the Concord School Committee elected to open a public process to select the name of the Concord Middle School according to their policy. The Concord School Committee has the same policy as nearly every other school district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Their policy aligns with the Massachusetts state law, the Town of Concord Charter, and recommendations from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, all of which grant authority to the school committee to name schools. The public process provided a mechanism for both naming suggestions and feedback on those names. The Concord School Committee advertised their public process heavily, utilizing both town and school resources and our very own Concord Bridge, and the outreach was effective. What's wonderful about Concord is you can always count on its citizens to be engaged on issues of public interest, and Concord's citizens surely demonstrated that they were interested in the name of the school. The school committee received 22 unique suggestions for names for the school. I'll note, just for interest, eight of the suggestions were women, two were Black men, one was a Black woman, and one was a joint suggestion of a name for a Medal of Honor recipient and the Black Navy Airman he saved. And of course, one was for the name of the community itself. Throughout this process, the school committee received over 300 pieces of correspondence on the subject, which clearly demonstrates that the citizens have already weighed in and made their voices heard. At their February 6th meeting, after a great deal of deliberation, the Concord School Committee elected to retain the school's current name, the Concord Middle School. I encourage all of you to watch the meeting. If nothing else, I think it demonstrates that our school committee members care a great deal about doing right by our students and our community. No matter which of the 22 suggestions the school committee selected that evening, some people were going to be disappointed. That's just the very difficult reality of government. There are almost never any decisions that satisfy all constituents. But the school committee's process has concluded, and the school has been named. Therefore, I just worry that the article before you doesn't really achieve much except creating confusion for citizens of Concord. I would hope instead that we can all just move forward and celebrate the opening of the Concord Middle School in 2025.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? All right.
We just, we want to put to the, I don't know, put it in the record or just so you have it, I'll pass this. This is the printed signatures of the 1,100 petitioners who signed the petition, just so you have some more information about those who spoke forward to this.
I have a question. Tanya Gila, 62 Prescott Road. Did the school committee start this process in reaction to suggestions in the first place that the school be named Ellen Garrison? Because that in itself is strange to me if that's the case. Thanks.
Well, I can't speak for the school committee. I can just tell you, by the calendar, this process was started on December 9th by the school committee, and it didn't begin with the public until January. Our perception, or my perception as a human would be, it was in reaction to, but I can't speak for the school committee on that.
Thank you. All right, are we ready to move on to Article 26?
Yes.
I'm Carmen Reese, 52 Devon Street. I am your town moderator, and I will be the person who moves and presents Article 26 at town meeting, which also means I will not be presiding over that article at town meeting. The deputy town moderator will be presiding. Article 26 asks town meeting to create a town meeting study committee. The full text of the charge for the committee is printed in the warrant. The committee would have nine members plus a non-voting Select Board member and a non-voting moderator member. The committee will be asked to conduct surveys, public meetings with public comment, hearings, to collect data from other towns, and to draft a report of recommendations to 2025 annual town meeting with a prior draft of the Select Board on ways to make town meeting more accessible and more inclusive for the citizens of Concord. Just a little bit of context, town meeting is part of a tripartite system of local government. It includes an executive, a legislative, and an adjudicative branch. Town meeting is our legislative branch. It is responsible for local bylaws, appropriation of funds, acquisition and disposition of town property, authorization of debt. As a legislature, town meeting is a deliberative body, and the definition of deliberation is discussion and consideration by a group of persons, such as a jury or a legislature, of the reasons for and against a measure. That differs from elections in which there are only up and down votes without discussion or a consideration of refinements to proposals at the polls. Let's see. Under state law, options for local, for the structure of local legislative bodies are three. They include an open town meeting in which all registered voters can come and act as legislators at the meeting. That is our current system. Representative town meetings, in which elected representatives come to town meeting. And town councils or city councils, which are really the same thing. Basically, a town council is a city form of government that is held by a town, and there are about 10 towns in Massachusetts that do have that form. So why study town meeting and why study it now? Well, no form of legislature is perfect, and times do change, and disgruntlement does happen. The last comprehensive study of town meeting here in Concord was conducted in 1996. That's almost 30 years ago. That report made about 20 recommendations of various types. Virtually all of them were implemented on a permanent or a provisional basis. And in addition, there were some other, some other improvements that were tried, including electronic voting, presentation of questions by email, and use of a QR code for the finance committee report. So this committee's job would be to make, figure out options to make town meeting more inclusive, more effective, more responsive to the needs of the town, to assess the combatability of the options identified with our current structure and our state law, to estimate the cost, and to make some recommendations to us on what to do. And I hope that the town will create this committee and see what we can do to make town meeting a better process. And are there any questions from the board?
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mary?
I have a question. Thank you, Carmen, putting this together. When you said that the--
Thank you, Carmen. When you said that the recommendations of the committee would be sent to the Select Board and presented at town meeting, how would they be implemented? Would they be implemented by town meeting, or would they be implemented? What is the next step if, to actually adopt these recommendations? So that would depend on what the recommendations were. There would be certain types of recommendations that might require town meeting action, in which case an article would have to be brought to town meeting to take that action. There are others, such as, for example, implementing electronic voting that wouldn't require a vote by town meeting. That could simply be, have the funds appropriated, and town staff could study what the best mechanism would be. And there might be policies or procedures that could be adopted by the Select Board or the town moderator in the conduct of the meeting and in the lead-up to the meeting. So it really depends on what the recommendations were, what would have to happen next.
Carmen, there are also three more articles about town meeting, petition articles, and depending on what happens with those, do you anticipate that this committee will be working maybe with those petitioners or, you know, depending on whether any of them or all of them get adopted at town meeting? How do you envision all this happening?
So the subject matter of the three citizen petitions are all on the specific list of 10 separate things that the committee is going to be asked to study and take public input on and think about and make a recommendation on. And one of those 10 topics is whatever else the committee thinks is appropriate to study. And I would say, and I will note, by the way, that because there is a potential appearance, at least, of conflict between those three separate citizen petition articles and the study committee article, I won't be presiding over those either. The deputy town moderator will preside over those. But it, one of those articles is on electronic voting. If town meeting, and that's an advisory article, if town meeting votes overwhelmingly in favor of electronic voting, then I would expect that the study committee would look at what the best mechanism is and what you should think about for implementing electronic voting. The other two articles, one is talking about remote participation in town meeting, and the other one is talking about basically a referendum vote at the polls on everything that town meeting does. Neither of those articles would be permitted under state law, and they would require petitions for home rule legislation, special legislation authorizing us to do that. And I would expect that the study committee, if whatever happens on those, those two topics are also topics for the study committee to be thinking about. Any other questions?
Anything else from the board? From the--
I have a different question.
Yes.
Yes, you just come to a microphone.
Yeah, I was just wondering--
Can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, sure. Dinas Gonatas.
Thank you.
And I was just wondering, for the other two warrant articles that you said violate state law, could you be more specific which chapter and section of the state law prohibit them? Because I've studied the state laws, and I can't find anything, one way or the other, that bears on those articles. So if you could inform me, that would be helpful.
Yeah, not every, not every provision of law is express. And sometimes what you have to do is look at the entire structure of what is permitted and required, and when you look at that, you can see what is allowed and what is not allowed. And I would tell you that it will be the view of town council that neither one of the proposals under those other two articles, votes at the polls, or remote participation is currently permitted under state law, and that will be the advice that is given to town meeting.
Right, but as you say, it's not expressly prohibited anywhere.
You cannot point to a specific chapter and verse--
So that means it doesn't exist then, correct?
It is in the structure of the law.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, we ready to move on then to, what do we have now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Article 27.
So let's see, is there-- Is there any way to show slides? Although I wasn't prepared to show slides.
I think--
Sure, if you could. I sent them to you for the previous meeting. Remember that one? So the last time we had this meeting, a couple months ago? That's fine. Thanks, Shannon. I really appreciate it, and you're working after hours along with the town--
If this is going to take any amount of time, we might move on to the next item and then come back to this?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right. So that would get us to Article 28?
She's ready to go.
Now she's ready.
Got it? Okay.
So, do you have the, wait. Thank you, thank you, Shannon. So this is just a very simple proposition. It's an-- simple proposition. It's an observation that, if you go to the next slide, the, the voting at town meeting has really declined quite a bit over time. And if you can, is there a way to scroll it so you can see the, I guess you can see the axes there? So there's really, the, the total attendance now at town meeting has dwindled to about five percent. But that's attendance which represents the peak number of people who vote for everything. If you were to actually look at the total number of people who vote, on average, for any warrant article, it's really about half of that, since a whole lot of people leave after voting on the articles of most interest to them. Town meeting being as time-consuming as it is, and many people have other things to do. And if you look at the turnout in this town special elections, which is in gray, or in state elections in blue, or presidential elections in green, you'll see that the, the turnout for all those elections is generally way more than for town meeting. So this is, really does suggest that there's a problem with the process, because we're making decisions affecting all of Concordians, but it's a tiny, tiny percentage of people making those decisions. It's really about two or two to four percent of people making those decisions on behalf of the, the other ninety, ninety-six percent. And what can we do about this? So the next slide, Shannon? Thanks. So we've presented a very simple article suggesting that, that starting in 2025 and thereafter, the warrant articles be presented to the voters in a special election, and we can expediently and with an efficient use of our time and not kill four to eight hours in a town meeting, make our voices heard. And this would enfranchise citizens in a way that they are not today. And if you go to the next slide, notwithstanding the opinion of, of the town moderator, there is a very specific provision in the Massachusetts laws that says, a town may provide that the election of officials and other matters to be determined by ballot shall take place. And we're proposing that these articles shall be specified as other matters to be determined by ballot. Now, I do recognize that there's a lot of established powers and people that are really trying to protect the status quo, because that's all they know about. But we're trying to change things and enable progress. And as I said before, and as the town moderator agreed, there is really no discernible prohibition in state laws, other than sort of a vague statement that, well, if you take them as a whole, that somehow it's not enabled. So let's go to the next slide. So another comment that's being used to defend the status quo is, well, this town meeting's a legislature, so we have to have everybody meet in person synchronously and kill a whole lot of time deciding these issues, and we can only vote in person. So let's compare town meeting so-called legislators to other legislative bodies. Now, if you look at the absenteeism rate in Congress, and I've looked at this data on this, in the Pelosi speakership, it was two percent, two percent. And state houses a smore, but it's still generally not more than ten percent. But in town meeting, we've got an absenteeism rate of ninety-five to ninety-eight percent, and yet they're called legislators. Now, I should point out that Nancy Pelosi did introduce an innovation, which was she allowed proxy voting for, for her Congress, so that individual members didn't necessarily have to be on the House floor for every single vote. Another aspect is, the debate in Congress is really very limited. There's, there's really no meaningful exchange of ideas on the House of the Senate, the Senate floor or the House floor. People are in their offices, or they're outside raising money. The bell rings, they make a mad rush to get in to vote. And the, the, the sort of thing where you see Mr. Smith goes to Washington where an impassioned member is speaking to the, the floor, well, that's really an anachronism. What happens today is, from time to time, a senator or congressman gets in the well of the House to make a speech, but it's to C-span, there's nobody on the floor. It's, it's all just for show. So that's the debate, how debate works in the federal legislature, and for the most part, in the state legislatures. So other differences, in terms of meaningful participation in the town government, your typical legislator is on one or more committees. Citizens of Concord, of course, there are a few that are on committees, such as our select board here, who are tirelessly, working, I, I'm very impressed with the amount of time that they put, that they put into this job, and I have to respect that. Compensation, the federal senators and representatives get a fairly decent compensation. In Massachusetts, significantly less so, but it's still enough to be considered a full-time job. Obviously, being a town meeting attendee is uncompensated. So again, the question is, what's the value of the debate? There's different ways of having debate. Here, it's possible to reach a very small number of people, and the select board has already heard this, and my apologies to them for them, having to go and sit through this all over again. The next slide, please, Shannon. So we are lucky that we have the Concord Bridge, where people can reach the entire town through the letters and your opinion pieces. Beyond that, there's also new technologies. If you take a course in college today, especially since COVID, you have, different courses have threaded discussions, so each student can make their opinions known on the different subjects and different questions. But it doesn't have to be done synchronously, it doesn't have to be done in person. There's lots of ways to do it. And again, these are all changes from the status quo. And that's what I'm trying to achieve, and I ask for your help. Thank you. If there are any questions?
Questions from the board?
Sure. Just, I'm interested in, and I think it would probably be helpful in your presentation to outline a little bit more specifics about what the timeline for such an election might be, and what might occur if something like, say, the school or the town budget was voted down at such a special election. How would that then be resolved under this proposal?
Well, as I understand, there are special elections, and so this would be then presented to the town as part of a special election. So whatever the, the issue would be, could be voted on by all the citizens. If there's an override, a spending override, the question would be then, should we add, add on, add that on as a, as an additional override measure? Am I missing your question?
So I think that in order to clarify what the ask is around this proposal, it would make sense to, sort of, I, we typically meet in town meeting in April, in late April usually. And there are rules about how quickly an election can be called. And so the question would be, if town meeting meets, town meeting adjourns on, you know, April twenty-sixth or something like that, then how soon could that election occur? And then if something of major impact, for example, a school budget or a town budget, was voted down at the special election, because if I understood your slide, it said, notwithstanding the action of town meeting, the, the election holds sway.
That's correct.
So I'm imagining, I'm asking a question with fiscal year starting on July one, what occurs if sometime in May or late May, a major budget item is rejected at the polls? How do we end up with an operational town government on July first?
I think the timing was suggested that there be this special election with, within three weeks of the town meeting. That's the language. And how would that change the overall time scale compared to the current system? That's, that's what I'm not really following.
Right.
If you'd like to suggest language that fixes the problem that, that you perceive, I'd be, you know, interested and welcome your suggestions.
What I, what I'm trying to say is that we need to understand, if town meeting is gonna cede its decision-making authority to an overall election.
Yeah.
What happens when that election resolves in such a way that we, for example, do not have an approved budget? What's the next step after that?
How is that any different from when the town meeting decision also results in a situation where there's no approved budget? So I'm a little confused. But I don't want to drag things out. I know you've got a lot to get through.
With, with the town meeting, if the vote fails, then there can be an amendment that would be considered. And so a new motion could be made, or there could be an amendment, so that you would resolve it during the period of the time, town meeting. And so it certainly would be cumbersome to have amendments and adjustments that would take place if, if there was just an up or down vote on any issue at the, at the polls. It's, it's just a, kind of a practical question, which, because what you really, what, what you, what you're really, what you're really eliminating is the deliberative process, which happens when these people at town meeting are debating the issue, and it appears that the original proposal will not succeed, or it is turned down, and then it is possible on, on the spot to make adjustments and have a new motion, have a decision made, that you, so you really lose that ability. And, I mean...
No, Henry, thank you very much for explaining that to me. I appreciate your comment. I think it's a good question. I, I think that's worth, worth some more thought, but I can't give you an on-the-spot answer to that right now. I think I'd have to think through that. But I appreciate your pointing that out.
Just that Mark's comment just brought to mind that, that particular issue was...
Yeah.
How, how you, how you deal with that. I think also another problem is that if actually try to imagine going to the polls and having a ballot with like forty or fifty items on it, where you check a box, it probably is not a thoughtful choice in many cases. So again...
Okay.
But I mean, this is a worthwhile discussion.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of implications that we really need to thresh, hash out and...
Yeah. Thanks, thanks, Henry. I really appreciate your comment.
I guess the second question I would have about such a ballot is, would that ballot likely contain whatever the town meeting recommended action was? Like, how would the ballot actually be constructed?
That's a good question, too, but, I mean, I would suggest that the, the voters could independently decide for themselves what they wanted to do. I mean, a good example is the, the leaf blower warrant article. I mean, there was an article that we considered, there were only about three hundred and fifty voters, and it impacted the, the livelihood of, of one of our businesses that are resident here. So this is an opportunity to have a much broader set of the population make their voices heard. So you have something that's truly democratic. Everybody's talking about how Concord is wonderfully democratic, but it isn't democratic if you only have two percent of the people voting. We have states around the country where there are hurdles put in place to citizen participation, limitations on the number of ballot, ballot drop boxes, the long lines for polling stations where people could wait over an hour to vote, discouraging voter turnout. And yet here, we put in this gigantic obstacle to participation that makes any voter suppression scheme in other states pale by comparison. And yet we're just sort of throwing up our hands and saying, well, we can't do anything about it. We have to preserve our process, because that's the way it's always been. That's just unacceptable.
Thank you. Carrie?
Just a quick question for the town clerk, and not to put you on the spot. If you, if you don't know now, I think by town meeting, I'd like to know how cumbersome this would be for your staff, how much time and money it would take to do this. And, you know, I'm sure you don't know right now, but before, before town meeting, we need to have some kind of an idea.
Well, we do have, the town has accepted a local option to provide voters with information if there's a question on the ballot. And so that, I don't know whether that conflicts with this warrant article, how it would work with it. That in itself would be a process that would not allow for three weeks after, you know, the town meeting to have an election. Now, the town of Milton recently rescinded a town meeting vote, so I was curious about that. And I, I looked at their charter, and it is in their charter. They're a representative form of town meeting, and they require five percent of the voters after, I think it's, within two weeks after town meeting, five percent of the voters would need to petition to have a vote rescinded. That's something that they have in their charter.
Okay, I'm just trying to get an idea of whether this is practical at all for your department, or we have to hire new staff, or how big of a project is this? And obviously, you don't know right now, but before town meeting, I think we need to know, if we were to vote for this, how practical, how can you, can you implement it, and how much would it cost?
That, that's the question, is how to implement it.
Right.
Because I don't, I don't know what the framework would be for implementing it.
I think implicit in your answer, though, is that there is, there is a methodology that could be implemented that would perhaps be more practical to have reconsideration at the polls or specified, unspecified votes, whether there was enough. It would be kind of like reconsideration, except on steroids.
Well, I just wanted to provide the information, because I thought it was interesting that there is...
Stefan?
I have a question.
Oh, Mary?
I have a question. Aside from the practical considerations, which I think are important, if the intent here is to increase participation in town government with a ballot, your graph indicates that turnout at ballot is about twenty percent outside of the years of a presidential election. So there would be some years during, that are off-cycle from a presidential election, when we could expect twenty percent turnout at the ballot. So my question is, do you think that's acceptable? And have you thought of other ways to increase that, if you're replacing the town with a ballot?
Well, first of all, I think that by making the decision-making much more efficient of citizens' time, not only is it a convenience to the citizens, but you significantly increase the number of people voting. Shannon, is there any way to get that chart back up? So I think, I'm not quite sure what you meant by the off-year elections. There are the presidential elections, and then there are the state elections, the state elections.
The interim years.
But then there's the town elections. The state election participation in Concord is quite high, so...
Well, it's hovering... No, I understand the graph. I do. I'm just saying that it's hovering around twenty percent, other than a presidential election and maybe some state elections. But there are interim years when...
It's probably just the town elections, not state elections.
Right.
I understand. I'm saying...
It's better than several percent. It's not ideal, but it's better, significantly better.
It's, it's probably worth noting that the town elections typically take place in the spring, around when town meeting and the state and federal elections take place in the fall, in November.
Correct.
So again, the timing question relates to, the expectation would be that if a ballot appeared in May, you know, let's say, within several weeks after our town meeting, it would more likely track to the performance of an annual town election than
Yeah.
a November state or federal election.
No, I, I agree. I agree. I think that's, I mean, that's realistic, but I think that's still a big improvement. I mean, it's a big improvement.
Okay.
And the other thing is, when you have the town elections, do you have a lot of ballot roll-off? In other words, if you have forty different articles, people might vote for the first twenty of them, and then not vote for the next twenty. I mean, it's, it's a little bit like when people walk into town meeting, vote on the articles of most interest to them, and then mostly, mostly they leave, because nobody has the patience. Few people, some people, great people have the patience, but not everybody does.
So then participation would be even lower.
But what?
Then it would be lower, because we would have no responses for some of the articles, is what you're, what you're suggesting might happen.
I can't say, but it's, it's, again, I would say, my expectation is you'd track the great graph, roughly speaking, and get around the twenty percent or so mark that as, on average.
Okay, thank you. Stefan?
Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. Again, I was, my question is similar to Mary's question, and that is, with the lower actual voting rate in town elections... rate in town elections, have you considered a representative town meeting form instead? Because in that case, you would have the entire population or the entire voting who are interested, voting for their representatives, who would then be delegated with the task of sitting through the hearings and the days and the nights and...
Yeah. And I think the experience from, I think it's Lexington House Representative Town Meeting?
Yes.
How long do their town meetings last?
Weeks. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Matt Johnson, 21 Withers Street. So the first thing I note in your article is that you say that all warrant articles for town meetings shall be presented to voters. But town meeting doesn't vote on articles. In fact, if you read an article, a typical article ends with, "Or take any other action thereto." And as a matter of fact, warrant articles have placeholder numbers in them, they have language that isn't final and that will get revised, they may have technical errors, perhaps as your article may have, that need to be corrected before a motion. Motions are what get voted on at town meeting take place. So this creates a massive confusion if the voters are going to vote on articles, whatever they may mean, versus town meeting, which is voted on motions. They're not voting on the same things.
Ned, yes? Did I get your name right?
Matt.
Matt, I'm sorry. Massive confusion. Again, you know, I think you've got a good point, and maybe that's something that you'd like to submit as an amendment to improve the language.
Okay, so then the second thing...
Yes.
Is that warrant articles, as they're turned into motions, tend to get amended at times.
Yeah.
Okay? And so you have the provision, and it seems like you've validated that through this previous discussion, that even if the town meeting votes something down, the voters could vote it back up.
Correct.
Okay, so if they're voting up, what are they voting up? Are they voting up the language that was presented in the warrant? Are they voting the initial motion? Or are they voting the amended motion that was finally voted down? Okay? Which thing would the voters be voting up? So let's just take an example. We've got, let's say, the high school bathroom project. Okay, so the high school bathroom project gets presented, okay, 2.3 mil. Somebody says, look, let's amend the article, let's cut it to 1.2. The amendment passes. Now, the whole motion goes to a vote, and the motion fails. So now you have the final motion that said 1.2, you have the initial motion that said 2.3. When the voters come and they say, I want my bathroom, what are they voting for? Are they going to vote for a 1.2 or a 2.3? And how would you be able to tell them?
Matt, I think that's a very thoughtful comment, and I'd like to think about that before giving you a flip answer, but I think that's a good comment.
Okay, and then the third one, which is following up on Mark Hal. So you've got, you know, a budget. A budget, you've really got to have a budget. So town meeting votes for a budget. The election, three weeks later, end of May, votes the budget down. Now, you've got the fiscal year starting July 1st. You've got to hold a special town meeting, and then you've got to have another vote, according to your thing. Well, by now, we're at late July, okay, before we actually have a budget. Now, I understand the United States doesn't seem to worry about this.
No, it doesn't.
Nor does the state of Massachusetts or Commonwealth, but the town of Concord is run a little bit better. Okay? And I mean, we want to have, need to have a budget at the beginning of the fiscal year, both for our schools and for our town.
It's a requirement.
Absolutely. This process could easily lead us to a case where we have to tell all the workers, go home on July 1st. So, you know, I would just like, what I would really like to say is, this proposal clearly, to me, hasn't been thought through very fully. And that there is another article here that is talking about creating a study committee. I think it's worth supporting that and perhaps not moving your article and saving us this debate at town meeting this year. And instead, have the debate in the study committee, and then the following year, yeah, if the study committee doesn't meet your needs, perhaps present it then. Or if the study committee does accommodate the right solution or comes up with an even better solution, go with that. So that's my comment.
That's a good comment, Matt, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're not done.
There's lots of other people that have their articles. I don't know...
These are important.
Have we pretty much covered it?
I'll be quick. So it's when you validate, I just want a couple of comments here. One is, because this hearing is also about helping you present, so I would support Matt's recommendation, but in the event that you go forward, you should really be a lot more practical about what does this mean to a voter. I can't even imagine going with my warrant article, or reprinted warrant article of what you're proposing, to the, on a ballot, and then trying to figure out my fifty answers to every single question, because it's not tenable. I don't think it's going to be very palatable, and we'd have to offer a lot more support to our citizens to even implement this. So the other recommendation I would have is to support Article 28, which would get you closer to greater participation.
I think Article 28 is a great idea, too, which is, and I know Scott is eager to present on that one.
I think the point has been very well made by this time. Is there anything new to add to this?
A little bit. So Cynthia Rainey, Hunter's Ridge Road. So we have a regional school district. And this is either an even bigger unintended consequence, where if our budget got voted down in Concord, we'd probably have to have a joint town meeting with the town of Carlisle to then vote a new budget, and we'd do the same thing again. And that would be a big cost to have a joint town meeting with the town of Carlisle, so there's that.
Okay.
One is Anita.
All right.
Pamela Dred.
What? Anita?
Anita.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Yep, just a couple of, a couple of quick, quick points. Oh, is there another Anita there?
No.
No.
Anita Tekley, 260 Virginia Road. Former town clerk, obviously not speaking for the town clerk, but I want to follow-up to something that the current town clerk said and implied. In the nineteen years I was town clerk, one thing that was drilled into all town clerks' heads is, town meeting is not an election. The rules about the two are very different. No absentee ballots, deadlines are all different, and it's really what Mr. Gonadis has proposed, while I appreciate the intent, I don't see how this can proceed without special legislation. And the way it's currently worded is not asking for a home rule petition, and I think as a minimum, that would be required. And whether the moderator would allow you to, in the motion, to add that language is her call. But because the rules are different, even just the rules about a special election ballot, you know, you need to have all the language, I think it's, and Carrie can correct me here, I think it's thirty-five days minimum before an election, so it isn't like you can have it two weeks later, three weeks later. You know, we're talking a minimum of thirty-five days, even if you could get the ballot prepared the day after town meeting adjourns, and that's unlikely. So we're really talking about a pretty large lag time. But I, I think this would be a great, something to bring up to the study committee, although they don't have oodles of time if they have to get a report by next year's warrant, but I think, I think it needs a little more study. And I know I had spoken to you, Mr. Gonadis, a few weeks back, and I applaud your exuberance here, but I think, I don't think it's ready for prime time. And I suspect it's not going to fly because it's going to require legislation, and you haven't worded it that way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anita.
Thank you, everybody. I think we...
Pamela Dred, 13 Concord Green.
I think we're done with this.
Can I make a comment?
I think we're done with this. We spent enough time on it, and I think we've covered almost all the possibilities. And we, I think it's time to move on. So let's go...
Twenty-eight.
What?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Article 28, citizen petition, remote participation. Mr. Gillis?
Good evening. Scott Gillis, thirty-four years at AD Alford Circle. Speaking on behalf of the petitioners for Article 28 that relates to remote voting, just three points about why this is being brought forward at this time. In 1996, at the last study committee, it was pointed out that many people in town felt disenfranchised, and one of the recommendations was to consider ways of addressing that issue. So this issue of feeling disenfranchised is a very old issue. The data that you saw earlier, it's still up on the, on the screen, these data suggest that over the last twenty years, voting has declined at town meeting. In the last ten years on average, at peak attendance, the peak attendance on average over the last ten years has been less than 1,000 registered voters. More people voted for our select board, and more people voted for our town moderator than on average attend annual town meeting. These numbers also mean that over 12,000 people, 12,000 registered voters in town over the last ten years on average, do not participate in town government. And this, as we've heard, is because there is a law in the state of Massachusetts that requires in-person voting, resulting in many obstacles to attending town meeting. Across Massachusetts, many towns are trying to address this issue. One example is the town of Wayland, who has a home rule petition before the legislature, as we sit here and discuss tonight, seeking permission to allow remote voting in the town of Wayland. The other reason it's being brought forward at this time is the advancements in technology. When these laws requiring in-person attendance were first written, technology wasn't what it is today. Back then, the technology that we all use every day in business, in schools, in, in town government, for example, these technologies didn't exist. They were only in science fiction. But today, they're a reality. As a matter of fact, there are multiple systems available today that could be implemented quickly for remote voting at Concord Town Meeting, at a modest cost, with a high degree of security, and easy to use for those people who choose to participate and vote via electronic In closing, I'd just like to make two points about the article itself. Article 28 would simply authorize our select board to petition the general court to give Concord the freedom, the right, and the opportunity to use electronic technology, modern technology for remote voting, how and when we choose to. And then the second point I'd like to make about Article 28 is there is nothing in the article that advocates for a particular commercial company, a particular technology, or a particular voting method. We believe that that kind of assessment and analysis is best conducted by an objective, independent, multidisciplinary group of people, such as the moderator's proposed town meeting study committee. And with that, I would say thank you and open it up for questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
Do you have something to add to what you already presented?
Yeah, you want to add some things, and then we'll have questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gillis. It was actually put forward the arguments very well. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that this is, Article 28 actually represents a project that, sorry, let me, probably can hear me better this way. Article 28 represents a project that David Allen and I have been working on for several years now. We initially had submitted a shorter version of this article. The moderator asked us to merge, and here we are. And I'm happy to say that all four of us petitioners on this article are a hundred percent agreed that this is, this is the right thing to do. I guess the thing is, we can't solve every problem, every barrier to town meeting this way, but we do hope to remove quite a few of them. David Allen and I are also huge fans of town meeting. We're, as a public legislative process, and we actually have a, our project is an idea of how this could continue to operate with changes that the town meeting study committee so desires, but if they desire not to, it could, it could continue exactly as it is right now. You've got two rooms already that are connected audio visually. This would be adding a third room. We'd take, we'd have a debate, people would line up at the virtual microphone in the remote rooms. If we take a vote, you'd see the vote in the gymnasium on the screens, you'd see the vote in the auditorium, you'd see how people voted in the remote locations. We have a, if you want to see more details on that, there's a frequently asked questions or FAQ, which you might find in the back of the room. And I just, meanwhile, we're looking forward to see what the study committee will say. And in summary, urging your support for Article 28, not to change the way town meeting works, but to, as Mr. Gillis has very aptly said, it's giving us an option, not a requirement, but an option, a choice that we can, if we choose to go that way, that Concord would be able to.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No? Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, we have Elizabeth Moore.
Hi, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, hold on, let me see if I can do this here. Okay, hi. I was just wondering, I'm a hundred percent in favor of this as well, and have, and really agree with them, and believe that, you know, we can probably get more, a lot more voters coming, and agree with the inclusivity of it, and how, we certainly have a disenfranchised voter, voter town right now, and some of the obstacles. But I was wondering, one of the big things I see with town meeting is that there's a lack of privacy, and it's one of the reasons why I felt personally uncomfortable at town meeting, especially as a mother, and with the school committee standing in front of the, in the front of the room, and the cameras looming down on you, and my neighbors and best friends in the audience. When I have felt the need to vote on a topic, and, and I felt like it was something that might put me at odds with my neighbors, I felt very uncomfortable about voting. I loved it the year of COVID when we did car voting. That was, that was a big success for me, or a big, you know, big positive for me. But I was wondering, with this remote voting, it sounds like the intent is mostly to increase participation, but is there any intent to increase privacy? And, and I say that because at the ballot box, we have privacy, and it has always been over, you know, decades. One of the democratic principles is to be able to have a vote, is to have a private vote. And my additional concern is that not only have we lacked privacy at town meeting, but recently, we've been publicizing these non-private votes, like for example, in the newspaper, in the superintendent sent out photographs of people actually in the act of voting, either some with their hand raised and very eagerly saying, yes, yes... yes, yes, and others with their arms crossed and saying, I'm really gloomy about this potential decision. And, and, and quite frankly, it feels like that is, you know, that, that the privacy issue has become as much of an issue as the inability to participate because you can't get there or you don't have the time. And I was wondering if the remote option would allow for more privacy or would it still be an open, you know, uh, transparent vote?
Elizabeth, first of all, thank you very much for your support of Article twenty-eight. To answer your question specifically, today's available commercial technologies would allow the town to have attributed voting or anonymous voting. In other words, you would hit, um, yes, no, or abstain, and that could be private or it could be attributed to you. And it's really up to the town and the people of the town, in my opinion, to decide whether they want voting in Concord Town Meeting to be anonymous or attributed. And Article twenty-eight does not take a position on that. It simply asks, authorizes the select board to seek, um, from the general court, the right to do remote voting, when and how we choose to do it.
Thank you. Would, by the way, on that, would, um, that also-
Chair, might I continue the response, please, as one of the co-petitioners?
I was just in the middle of asking a question, so-
I'm sorry, sir, I'm not being able to hear you.
Yeah. Oh. Um, would this, uh, this proposal also include mechanical voting at the town meeting or is it just cover remote voting?
So this proposal is just remote voting. Article twenty-nine goes to voting, uh, with so-called clickers, in other words, essentially anonymous voting in the physical venue. What's, lies in the background here, as I think we all appreciate, is the question of whether or not we stand and be counted the way town meeting does it now and has for a quite long time, or whether or not we change to an anonymous vote. Uh, a little bit of history, and I really appreciate Scott's, uh, laying out the landscape here. The article doesn't specify and should not specify, and indeed, this is going to be a hot issue for the town, uh, town meeting study committee. But just to be sure that we've got our hands around Concord tradition and history, you go back about a decade and a half, about fifteen years, the select board, uh, raised the bar necessary for an anonymous vote from something like five percent or a few voters up to a standard majority vote. Over that period of time, uh, I think the only time that there was, in fact, a secret anonymous vote was a time when I, who was responsible for counting them and opposed the idea of doing it, still stood, rose at town meeting because I thought that particular case, a secret vote probably was indicated. There may have been one or two others, but Concord Town Meeting has not had a secret ballot, uh, as a matter of course. Once again, this is going to be one of the more important questions that the study committee will face, and Scott, uh, very appropriately, very nicely pointed out, the article says nothing about that, and indeed, the technologies that are available, and if you'll read the FAQ that's available, if you run out back there, see me afterwards and I'll see you get a copy. The technology that's available allows you to do an attributed vote and also a secret vote.
Thank you.
Crucially, there is a way to do what Concord has been doing. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Ned Perry, three six two Bedford Street. I have two points. The first point is that Mr. Gillis drafted this warrant article and collected the necessary signatures. He is the petitioner, not Mr. Carr, not Mr. Allen, and they should not be allowed to be co-petitioners. I'm sorry, mistakes have been made and they need to be corrected. That's number one. This is not their petition article, this is Mr. Gillis's, and he should be allowed to present it and be the petitioner. Number two, Concord has had a long tradition of an open town meeting process. When we had a small number of voters, we used to vote anonymously by voice. Even with hands raised, which is the better way to do it with the number of people we have, it's mostly anonymous and there's a, and, um, so we do not have a tradition of stand up and declare. Part of the hesitancy of people to go into town meeting is the privacy of the vote. And I think the remote voting and the electronic voting would help us. We've had plenty of paper ballot votes. I'm sorry, Mr. Allen, but, um, we've had them, they take a long time, and the electronic voting and this remote voting would speed up that process if handled properly by the moderator. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think, um, I think we've been ready to move on to the next, uh, yes. Perry?
I, I would just like to speak and apologize for the confusion about, there were two identical warrant articles that were submitted, and I had assumed that there were, um, additional pages to the original petition article that was submitted, so there, there were in fact two articles submitted. So there were two sets of petitioners. So I want to apologize for that confusion.
I don't, yes, I, I don't think it was, I don't think it was your confusion, but-
Well, I think I caused the confusion.
No.
But I, I do have a question for the petitioners, and that is, how do we check voters in with remote participation? Thank you.
Sorry, before you leave the microphone, could you just, could you just identify who the petitioners actually were of the two identical articles that you got?
The petitioners, I have the, are the actual petitions here and I would have to look at them. And so David Allen is one of the petitioners, and Scott Gillis, and, and Mark Martinez, and David Carr as well. David Allen and David Carr, and then Scott Gillis and Mark Martinez.
Okay. Thank you.
If I could just make a comment, um, we kind of look at that as a procedural thing. All four of us, um, advocate for, um, approval of Article twenty-eight to enl, enfranchise the twelve thousand people in Concord who don't participate today, and we seek the board's unanimous support for this article. And when you do consider whether you're going to support it or not, we ask you to think not of the less than a thousand people that attend town meeting, but the twelve thousand people that don't. So, um, on the matter of the four of us, we're unified with the same, uh, the same goal in mind. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exactly.
So I believe the town clerk's question was, was how people might check in, which I think is a reasonable.
Do we have an answer to that?
Did, were you able to address that?
I didn't hear the question.
So the town clerk had, had asked a question under this proposal for remote participation. Is there a methodology that's understood about how people check in?
Thanks, yes. Certainly there's, uh, very much an answer. Once again, I strongly commend pick up a, a copy if they're gone, see me afterwards. It's formulated right now as memorandum to the select board, but you'll see, it's a four-page FAQ. Uh, there's a technology, it's called Votes, V-O-A-T-Z. Uh, we've been working with them for some years. The moderator first brought Votes out here, maybe half a dozen years ago, which is how we met them. Let's be clear, there's been a very hot struggle over security of remote voting. You'll discover when you go onto the Votes site, the V-O-A-T-Z dot com site, once again, it's in the FAQ, uh, there's a pointer to where you can get this information. You can find out, uh, they are one of the leaders. Uh, I certainly don't want to try to address that issue now, but it's very important to understand about the security. Votes has been used in, what is it, a half dozen federal elections now? Been used to elect presidents of the United States. There's no question about the technology. It's solid stuff. As to how it actually works, uh, folks have to work through the clerk's office to, uh, get the authorization to use the Votes app, either on their phone or on an iPad, that maybe is alone to them if they don't have an iPad. We don't want to get into that now. That's been very soundly taken care of. It's all there. Thank you. And don't hesitate, please, to ask this question. David, myself, Scott, and, and wait, Martinez.
So-
Yes.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, please.
Uh, Matt Johnson, twenty-one Winter Street. So, does this, does your proposed system, and I realize that the article is not about a specific system, however, does it authenticate the principles on each vote or at the check-in? In other words, could I, uh, my wife and I both check in at home, um, and then I have the two laptops or two iPads and I'm hanging out there, and as, you know, the articles come through and get voted on, I could just hit both and both of us can vote all the way through the meeting. I don't know if it's a bug or a feature, but that's something that people have, uh, you know, in our household, uh, wanted for some time, but, um, you know, in, in the past at least, it, it, Concord, we voted with our feet, you know, you have to literally be there. Um, so, you know, would this allow this sort of absenteeism during the meeting, or would you have face ID on every vote?
So, um, I'm glad you bring this forth, Matt. Barbara and I have canceled each other's vote out at town meeting, definitely from time to time. And I'm quite sure other couples have had the same experience.
Which is how it ought to be, actually, but-
So it does matter who's doing the voting. This is not a small issue. In fact, uh, the lead over in Wayland, a fellow named Dave Bernstein, I've gotten to know, uh, he's a tech maven of the sort you rarely find, has assembled a group of equally tech, uh, really high-end folk. I won't do more than say that now at the moment. They themselves were centrally concerned about this problem, and for a year or two, they actually refused to move ahead because they didn't have a solution to it. They have come up with a solution. I frankly am not sure what it is. I'd be glad to share it with you, in fact, put you in touch with Dave to discuss this matter. It's, it's a very important matter.
Yeah, there's a reason why, in the past, you could put in your PIN at the ATM and do three transactions and then leave. Now you have to put your ATM PIN in every single transaction. That's authenticating by transaction.
Again, uh, even when you look into the, the security technology here, you'll see it in spite. David?
I was just gonna say, yeah, it's, it's, again, it's a technological solution, um, which certainly exists, a lot, a lot of these handheld devices do have the ability that, to, to, to identif, to authenticate you every time you push the button. Uh, so, so I think, I, I, let me just say that I think we can make it more secure than, than actual town meeting, where you could technically bring your, your teenage, um, seventeen-year-old child and hand them your ballot and say, just vote this way on this thing, I've got to go off and do some business.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, but, but we actually have, the, the technology could actually prevent you from handing that off that way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, are we ready to move on? Okay. Um, let's go on to, uh, is it, um, Article twenty-nine? Twenty-nine? No. Have we already done twenty-nine?
I know, this is twenty-nine.
Okay. So, twenty-nine, handheld, a lot, electronic, yes. Mark?
Yes, uh, Mark Martinez, sixty-six Alfred Circle. Uh, Scott Gillis and I, uh, will be presenting a town meeting. This petition to move that the town utilize electronic voting devices, commonly known as clickers, to tabulate and record votes at Concord's special and annual town meetings beginning next year. This article has nothing to do with twenty-eight. We believe the case to start using clickers is compelling, and there's no reason to wait any further to approve the use of clickers at town meeting. Clickers save time, they respect the voter's time, they're more accurate than hand counting, they're private, secure, easy to use, they're widely used, and will encourage voting and attendance. First point, clickers save money and respect the voter's time. The town of Wayland, for example, reported that clickers saved an average of almost three and a half hours-
Wow.
-per annual meeting from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. Clickers will shorten Concord's town meeting and reduce overtime costs of town employees working at town meetings, such as police and fire, will reduce the cost to keep the high school open, including janitorial staff, electricity and other operating costs. And importantly, will respect the voter's time. Clickers are more accurate than handheld counting. We recognize many votes at town meeting are not that close. However, more accurate voting is important, particularly when articles are critical to the town's future. Clickers are secure and widely used. The town of Westford noted that there are over six, seventy towns in Massachusetts with town meeting, open town meetings, using a form of clickers. And the feedback from the towns published in the Massachusetts Moderators Association available on town websites is, quote, "uniformly positive," end quote. Towns cite speed, accuracy, and privacy as primary benefits. Importantly, the town of Westford and other towns confirm there have been no complaints about security. You know, Elizabeth Moore sort of teed it up perfectly for me. Clickers are more private and encourage voting. The reality is voting at town meeting has become much more contentious. Warrant articles commonly pit neighbors and friends against each other. Many times voters are afraid to ask questions, make a point, or show opposition. We believe hand raising at town meeting is suppressing voting as well as suppressing attendance. The Williams Town Clerk, for example, noted, quote, "There are people in the community that don't feel comfortable raising their hand to vote one way or another. And many voters don't vote at all," end quote. The town of Wayland concluded, quote, "Town meeting is more relaxed, deliberate, and methodical. Decisions made in this environment are better to the benefit of every Wayland citizen," un, end quote. On the issue of cost, clickers will be cost-effective. Some towns purchase them, others lease them. Making Concord Town Meeting shorter and more efficient will save not only overhead costs, it will also save less tangible costs, including the value of voter's time, which collective savings will far outweigh the cost of purchase or lease clickers. Think about this. If we assume a thousand voters attend town meeting and each voter's time is worth, on average, fifty dollars an hour, the voters will collectively save fifty thousand dollars an hour by the use of, each hour shortened by the use of clickers. For reference, based on preliminary estimates, clickers range from anywhere between five and fifteen thousand dollars to lease per day of town meeting. So saving one hour of time, reducing town meeting by one hour of time, will easily pay for the cost of clickers leased over a three-day town meeting period. Next point, clickers are easy to use in promote attendance as well as, uh, voting. A common clicker offered by the market leader, Meridia Interactive Solutions, offers the voter three options: yes, no, abstain. The system doesn't show voters the number of votes for or against an article in the vote, until the voting- the voting concludes. And among other benefits, there is no way to tell which way the voters are leaning or who is voting how. So, clickers will foster independent voting and prevent a herd mentality. The town of Maynard noted a twenty percent increase in their attendance at town meetings after incorporating clickers in Maynard. Clickers address a major concern highlighted in Concord's last town meeting study report, again, thirty years ago. The report noted, quote, "Problem: Many citizens are reluctant to be seen to take in a popular position at town meeting, and are also reluctant to initiate the present procedure for secret ballot. Accordingly, they feel disenfranchised from the process," end quote. The report further noted, "Many voters are uncomfortable voting in front of friends, family, neighbors, and possible business supervisors and colleagues. I have witnessed firsthand where a voter's public comment and vote on a particular warrant article has offended another voter, and that second voter stopped doing business with the first voter after town meeting. For those voters who relish the opportunity to speak and declare their position and vote at town meeting, clickers will continue to allow public debate, public advocacy, including a speaker's choice to announce how he or she wants to vote or intends to vote. The first step is devoted our annual upcoming meeting in April to recommend the use of clickers at our annual special and town meetings beginning next year. Thereafter, the town, including with the help of the moderators, town meeting study committee, if it's approved, can evaluate and recommend the best technology options for clickers for Concord to either buy or lease. Town meeting's approval of Article 29 will lead to faster and more accurate voting, will respect the time of voters, will respect the desire of many voters to keep their votes private, and will increase attendance and participation." I want to make one note, and I'm glad that Ned, you know, spoke, that, you know, we've heard about a notion of stand up and be counted, and it's been asserted as a principle of town meeting. The notion is just not true. The identity of individual votes at town meeting has never been counted or reported in any way. On the contrary, anonymous voting by secret ballot has always been an option. Unfortunately, as reported by the last town meeting study report, many voters either don't know how or are reluctant to initiate the procedure for secret ballot voting at town meeting. So with that, I want to thank the select board and ask that they consider supporting voting for Article 29.
Thank you. Carrie?
I'm in favor of these clickers, and I'm a little bit confused because I know we tried them maybe three, four years ago, and in fact, in the packet, it says under Exhibit A, there's a big list of towns that use these clickers, and Concord is even listed already. So, I don't know, it says data provided by the town of Wayland, it's in tonight's packet. So, I just want to figure out very briefly what the history, I know we tried something like this, and then what happened?
So, let me just speak to Exhibit A. So, Exhibit A is always cite your reference points, and so, I will follow up with the town of Wayland, I did notice that the other day. I'm not quite sure why Concord is listed there, but if you look, there are a lot of neighboring towns, most importantly, Carlisle, who recently adopted clickers, Acton Belmont, you know, Stowe, Wayland, Wellesley, Westford, Weston are all available for the moderators to weigh in and give their experience. And I think it was in nineteen, Carmen, that, 2019, that we tried clickers.
I think it was actually earlier than that, but I'm happy to address that experiment if you would like. We did have a trial run with clickers. I'm not remembering at the moment who our vendor was, but we had the vendor there to give us advice. There was a great deal of anxiety and reluctance about using the clickers, with the result that we did not actually use them to tabulate our votes. We did our votes with our raised paper ballots, paper voting slips rather, and then we took the votes after that by clicker to see what that was like. And people had no trouble using the clickers, they were very easy, and the system that we used integrated with PowerPoint, which enabled us at the conclusion of the vote to put up a wonderful graph on the screen that would demonstrate what the vote looked like. And it worked just fine. We did do an exit survey of folks who attended that town meeting, and it was pretty evenly split between people who were in favor of using electronic voting and people who were dead-set against it. And many, many of the people who were in favor of it were also very much in favor of being able to do it at home with their electronic clicker. And I would say that it was a number of years ago now, and I think that the COVID pandemic in particular has really changed the public's understanding and familiarity and level of comfort with technology. And it may well be that we're in a very different place now than we were then in terms of the readiness of the community to embrace electronic voting.
So...
Thank you.
A number of the articles I read cite speed, accuracy, and privacy, and I think that Elizabeth Moore really touched upon it. I mean, if you look at this year's warrant articles, there are a number of articles that are, for lack of a better word, controversial, and, you know, there are some hard positions with neighbors and friends sitting next to you, and to vote contrary to maybe how they would think you would vote is, you know, difficult and challenging. But the reality is, I think the privacy issue is, you know, probably a top-two issue if you were to survey the towns. And I do think that if the goal is to, you know, Carmen, I actually think that the goal of the task force should be to increase voter attendance and participation. So, you know, whether it's Scott's graph or what we were talking about, I mean, the fact that, you know, we have certain articles passing, you know, three hundred to two hundred is a huge problem. And if there's an advantage to clickers, namely privacy, speed, and accuracy, and that will bring more people to town meeting, and if we can even get an extra five hundred, you know, it's a heck of a lot better than we have today. So, I understand that certain people may not like the three-button technology, and there may be people who really believe that stand-up and be counted is a philosophical principle of the town, which it's not. But I would hope the select board would think about, how do we encourage people to come to town meeting?
Mary?
I have a question, and this kind of follows up with what I asked you earlier, Carmen, about what is binding and how do we bind? So, if this passes at town meeting, is this binding? Or what is the next step that we would have to take to actually implement this?
So, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I think, you know, Carmen, I don't want to speak for you, but my understanding is that if you wanted to incorporate clickers, you could do so.
Right.
So, this for me is the, the reason why we brought this up is the town hasn't adopted clickers. There are five to ten towns around us who have, and candidly, we don't understand why we haven't adopted them to date. And if it's going to require a town meeting to, pardon the expression, force the issue, I guess that's what we're trying to do.
Right, I'm wondering, will a vote by town meeting force the issue? Is there something else?
Well, the language of the article is, asks whether the town will vote to utilize clickers at town meeting, and assuming that the motion under the article is the same, then it would be a binding vote that would then make it incumbent upon us to figure out what kind of technology we're going to use and bring it to twenty, twenty-five town meeting.
Great, thank you.
Again, we're not, you know, we're not speaking to which technology, there are three leading technologies, and I'm not speaking to the technology. We're not speaking against the prior article forming the town committee. We just think that this is low-hanging fruit, get it off the table, and focus on bringing more people to town meeting as the study committee's primary goal.
Thank you. Anybody in the room have any comments or question? We have, is Ms. Moore still, is your hand up left from before?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I was going to ask the same question. I was wondering why it's going to town vote to begin with, because based on some information I've been reading about the moderator, I thought that they would have the option to implement them if they wanted to. And my concern about it going to vote is that we have some very strong special interest groups in town that can be a large number of the participants that are in the room. And there may be, and if one of these special interest groups were to be against this motion, or this warrant, motion, motion, you know, the problem is that we're voting on how to vote. And so, would this be something that's better for the ballot box, or would this be something better for the select board to decide on, or the moderator? You know, is this really an appropriate item to have a vote on when there are allowable ways that we can go about it without that? For example, we could test it this year. If we allotted a small amount of money, we could, we could test it at this vote, while we're voting on it. And so, that's my question, I'm not sure who it's addressed to, but is voting on it really the method for which we would implement the clickers? Couldn't they be implemented if the moderator said, "This is the method by which we want to vote this year"?
Okay, thank you. Carmen?
Yeah.
So, we don't have a bylaw that addresses how that we vote at town meeting. We have, we have town traditions and procedures, and it is open to the meeting to have, entertain a motion to fix the manner of voting, so it can be up to the meeting to decide how the meeting is going to vote, whether it's going to use clickers or secret ballots or some paper ballots or something else. And I would say that over the years in Concord, moderators have implemented a number of changes in procedures, including the use of a consent calendar, for example, and so forth, and that happens to be our town tradition, that we have very little in the way of bylaws and generally operate more by the discretion of the moderator and the tradition and practice of our town. So, we certainly could bring electronic voting to town meeting, and indeed, that's why we tried it at one town meeting. It was the moderator who had the bright idea of trying it out at town meeting and exposing everyone to it and seeing what we thought. And I would say that had the reaction at that point been overwhelmingly in favor of it, I certainly would have implemented, but because it was evenly divided, I did not.
How long would it, how much lead time would you need to have in order to actually implement it for, let's say, this year's annual town meeting? Or is that, or do we need more time than that?
Yeah. No, it could happen for, we, this is now the end of February, and so, to be able to do this by the end of April would be doable, but we would need, we would need that in the budget. And I'm not sure it's in the budget, but it, we would, we would need a budget for that, and we would need to, I think we'd probably have to bid this, so we would have to go out to different vendors to look at what the costs would be and make a decision. We'd also have to make some decisions about whether we were going to purchase the units and operate them in-house, or are we going to lease the units and have the support come from the outside? So, there would be a number of choices that would have to be made, and if we were going to have to rustle that up quickly for this year's town meeting, we'd be pretty pressed, and I would gather together folks from town staff to look hard at this, which is what we did previously when we selected a technology to try. We even went to several other town meetings to watch these things in action, we interviewed several vendors, we tried out several different kinds of things. So, I would imagine going through a process like that again, which would take longer than from, between now and our next town meeting.
Well, of course, we could always charge admission to town meeting, couldn't we? And one of my favorite marketing maxims is, if you can't give it away, sell it.
I read Tom Sawyer and Huckleberry Finn, too.
And if, and if nobody buys it, raise the price.
I might make a comment here because I was in the role of IT director when, when this experiment took place, and I think that it's almost certain that some things have changed, and I think the technology has matured, and like a lot of technology options, I would expect that they've also come down somewhat in price. But for our multi-day town meeting, we were looking at ten thousand or more dollars to rent this equipment. Also, without naming any names about these communities that we visited, we saw some real problems with check-in and registration, at least at some of these meetings that we went to. So, whenever you introduce technology into a large event, and that event becomes dependent on that technology, we sat in one town meeting where there was literally hours of delay as they tried to get their electronic devices ready to work to take this vote, and everybody was stuck and very frustrated. So, we saw some things that raised some concerns, and also, as the person who was responsible for organizing the technology staff to support town meeting, that, that is a stretch in and of itself. That takes a lot of work from the town manager's office as well as the IT department, and this was another sort of order-of-magnitude layer of activities that was, that were going to be required, that then have to be recycled again. So, while the costs are, you know, compared to some of the numbers that the petitioner raised here, when we talk about the, the cost of savings of the citizens' time, and that's not to be discounted, we were talking about some real time and effort around a very limited number of staff resources that we had that would do it. And when we looked at how many votes it was really likely to make a difference, I think at that time, our thinking was that it, on balance, had relatively limited usefulness. Now, I agree that many things have, have changed now, and some of the things that I've heard this evening are reason to rethink, but I would not minimize the, the time and effort, and certainly would, would not be inclined to try and rush into clickers for this existing town meeting, recognizing that staff has a lot of work to do to prepare already, and the timeline is well underway.
Well, I, I think that this discussion for these last few articles has been really useful and informative, and really was a very good warm-up for going forward with this. And it was really more substantive discussion than we might have had the opportunity to have in any other context. So, I think these, these hearings are, tend to be more or less pro forma, but I think we really got a lot done over the last half hour on this. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Stefan? Are you, I think, I think we're done on this, aren't we? Are you, I think, I think we're done on this, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Huh? We're done on this. We want to move on to our, we're going to take, we're going to take one more article on this, and this is going to be our favorite, which is the ag committee's amendment to the yet-to-be-adopted bylaw requiring vendors to charge a fee for paper bags, and the desire to have an exception for agricultural products. Is that what it boils down to?
For farm stands and?
Farm stands. So let's do that, and then it's, I think that we probably will have accomplished enough for tonight, and we'll carry on with the remaining items on our meeting on March 4th.
Not going to be here.
Me?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Change of pace. Hi, I'm Liza Bemis. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Agriculture Committee. So this is Article 30, which is to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to modify the previously submitted legislation by adding exemption for farm stands or vendors at a farmer's market from the required minimum charge of 10 cents for all new checkout bags distributed in the town of Concord. So the Concord Ag Committee was recommending this exemption because farm businesses are often unique from other small businesses. Notably, they're often very basic store setups. In most cases, the cash registers are very old or very basic adding machines, and they can't be modified to do the required checkout bag charge line on the receipt that's required by the previous legislation. Upgrading these systems would be a pretty hefty burden to a business that otherwise didn't need to upgrade a system. The other thing is that most small farms, or not most small farms, many small farms do not sell anything other than fruits and vegetables, which are exempt from sales tax. Since paper bags are not an exempt good, a sales tax must be collected on the bag fee and reported to the state, a burden for a small farm that otherwise reports no sales tax, and they might not even have a sales tax account. Additionally, since many small farms are only selling exempt goods from sales tax, all of their goods are also EBT and SNAP eligible. So to have to ask for an additional payment would, to cover the bag fee, would add some confusion and also just be a stigma to those paying by EBT cards. So we wanted to avoid that. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Is there any comment on this one, or any questions about it?
No.
No? All right.
Thank you.
Have we reached our, the limit of our endurance for the evening?
Thank you, Eliza.
I think we, we announced that we would do no new business after 10 o'clock. And it's 9:30. And there have been people who I think had a strong expectation that their articles were going to be able to be presented here tonight.
I think it's 10:30.
Hmm?
10:30?
It's 9:30.
Is it?
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't we do? Why don't we do Article?
Is that what your basis of?
Yes.
Oh, it was, okay. So then, yeah, well, we'll continue up to 10.
Why don't we do 31 and 32?
Well, let's just see where this gets us. I just don't want to.
Otherwise, we're going to be in a big hall.
Okay, okay, okay. No, no, that's all right.
I think 31 and 32 might go fast.
Well, that's all right. They will, whatever it is, so we're going to move on. We have, we've dealt with the, the bag fee, and now we'll move on to 31. Who's here for 31?
I'm here remotely. This is Brad Hubbard Nelson.
Brad Hubbard Nelson, the Ramones.
Oh, he's remote?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, well, can we get you up on the, the big screen? Yes, that's good. Thank you.
Sure.
31, update town goals to meet climate challenge. Right?
Yes, I'm Brad Hubbard Nelson. Live at 221 Machodick Road.
We can barely hear you. I don't know where the volume is on our end or your end.
I can't do much on the volume on my end.
Okay, we're going to ask for tech support here and see if they can increase the volume in, in the room before you go, Brad. Try now.
Okay. I'm Brad Hubbard Nelson. I live at 221 Machodick Road, and I'm the Chair of the Climate Action Committee. And Article 31, can you, is, am I loud enough now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Article 31 is, is a relatively simple article that is, the Climate Action Committee is bringing forwards, and it is to try to keep Concord as a leader in climate action among communities in Massachusetts, or among the leaders. As we know, the climate crisis is not, is, is more serious with time and impacts closer all the time. And Concord has been, has been for years a leader in trying to be an example for lowering emissions to mitigate the crisis, and since, for more than 10 years. And the Article 51, which we adopted in 2017, was based on the climate, on the Global Warming Solutions Act for Massachusetts that came out in, I think, 2008. And that set our climate action, our emissions reduction goals with which we made a climate action plan in 2020. Now, that plan doesn't need to be changed, but we wanted to change the goals of the town to be consistent with the state goals. And the state goals were revised in 2020, no, that's 2022, with the Climate Roadmap Bill that our Senator Michael Barrett championed, and also the Clean Energy and Climate Plan of 2030. And these, with our town's climate action plan, we have a number of actions that our Climate Action Committee is working to complement CMLP, which are a lot of about electrifying residences and things like that, and businesses, and municipal buildings. And we're making progress, but we know we have to make more progress. And we, the Article 31 asks just to reframe the goals for the town to be consistent with the state's goals, which are 50% emissions reductions by 2030, and 85% emissions reductions by 2050. And we set an interim goal of 2040 of, I believe, 75%. And these are important just so that people, that we prioritize the work that our committee does and that the town takes on in municipal buildings and in helping residents and commercial buildings to achieve. And so we are asking the town to give a vote of support to somewhat stronger climate action goals, consistent with the state's goals.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have one.
Mary?
Brad, thank you for this. This particular article is pretty aspirational. And for me, I, I'm a more concrete person, so I'm wondering if, when you're presenting this, or maybe even in a handout, if you showed us the progress that we've made to date, and what are some other actions that are in, in the pipeline right now, and what that impact would be on achieving this, the, the old target or the new target? So more specifics around, you know, where we are relative to, to this target, what are some things that we could do to meet this target makes it more real to me and makes it more actionable.
I, I totally agree. Our committee is working on being able to report our action towards, our progress towards the plan in the next month, I hope, certainly before town meeting.
Okay.
But I agree, being concrete, which we can do in the handout, is important.
And I'd also put a plug in for the Solar Implementation Task Force, and you might want to think about what are some of their ideas and what that might do to impact progress towards these goals. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Okay. Any comments or questions from the audience here or online? All right, let's, then we can move.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask two sort of general questions before we move on? They're just quick.
Sure.
One is, could we have some sense of what the high and lows have been in terms of the participation remotely for tonight's hearing? That's one. And then I have a question for the town moderator, I think it is, about whether there is some kind of guidance or tradition in the, in terms of the information we give to presenters about their initial presentation, generally how long it should be? I, I understand that the debate and the deliberation depends on audience participation, but do we generally somehow give some guidance to presenters?
You're talking about for these hearings, or you're talking about for town meeting?
Well, part of what we've done in this meeting in the past has been to give some suggestions to presenters, and so it's in that vein that I'm asking the question.
The, the hearing has been. Yeah, the hearing, these hearings have been used in the past for people to do kind of a dry run of their, of their PowerPoint presentations for town meeting, which lets everybody see how the slides look and comment on them and help people refine their presentations. So we're not using PowerPoints at, at the hearing, so we don't have that advantage. We are hearing oral presentations and kind of keeping general track of how, how long people are taking in their presentations. But at the moderator's town meeting coordination meeting, which I don't have the date in front of me, but that will, that will happen, and we will have, all of the presenters will be assigned an amount of time that they will have, and they will be expected to, to develop their PowerPoint presentations and their presentations to stay within their time limit at town meetings. So there will be that expectation and that guidance. And in addition, both I and town staff will review everybody's PowerPoint presentation, not for content, but just for confirmation with our guidelines, so that we'll be able to see them on the screen. Are they within the margins? Are the colors right? Is the font size big enough, et cetera?
So actually, I would, the, the, the method that we've used tonight was, I think, was more or less my choice, and I did communicate that, that I, because I realized a number of items that we had to cover, if we made it a rehearsal, we would be here all night. And that I, I also believe that when we ask people to submit written materials, they are more concise and more direct, and the oral presentations are, are more substantive than having people put PowerPoint slides up on the screen and then reading them. So I, I guess it was my choice to try and make this have more substance and be more compact. So, and I think it's worked.
And then the, the other thing I raised was that sometimes in these meetings, we've gotten some indication of what the high and low.
Online?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be helpful to know.
We probably can get that from the technical people at the end of the evening, I would guess. So thank you, though, for that question. So we'll move on to the, what's, what's next? The fossil?
32.
Fossil-free? That's, that's, that's actually for archaeology, isn't it?
Good evening. I'm Eric Sims, the Sustainability Director. I appreciate the opportunity to give some context for Article 32. This article is fairly straightforward. It proposes amendments to an existing bylaw for the town to participate in the new fossil-fuel-free building demonstration program, which is being managed by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. Participation in the program allows Concord to be one of only 10 municipalities in Massachusetts to prohibit the use of fossil fuels in new residential and commercial building construction. The original bylaw was passed at 2021 town meeting and was later amended at 2023 special town meeting to reflect draft program regulations that were released in late 2022. Concord submitted a formal program application in the summer of 2023, as requested by the Department of Energy Resources, and we received notification of acceptance into the program in late December 2023. The current bylaw is scheduled to become effective on June 22, 2023. Along with the application approval, the Department of Energy Resources strongly recommended that Concord amend our bylaw to make two changes that would more closely align our bylaw with the program regulations and with the bylaws of the other participating towns. The first proposed change is to include major building additions and renovations in the bylaw, which is currently limited to new building construction only. All other participating towns have included major renovations, which serves to capture significant building infrastructure investments that will have impacts on climate change for the next several decades or more. And major renovations are defined in the proposed bylaw language. So there's a little bit technical, so I won't get into those right now. The second proposed change is to eliminate an explicit exemption of affordable housing from the current bylaw. The original reasoning behind this exemption was to ensure that requiring highly, highly efficient, all-electric building construction did not add significant incremental costs to affordable housing projects. Although this argument may have been justified even only a few years ago, mounting evidence suggests that the costs of new, highly efficient, multifamily building construction has approached parity with that of traditional new construction. So in summary, amending the current bylaw through the proposed Article 32 will satisfy the Department of Energy Resources recommendations to better align Concord with the program implementation and goals, and with the other participating towns, and will increase the impacts of the program here in Concord, and further advance the town's greenhouse gas reduction goals.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Keith?
Keith Berkman, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. I'd say, speaking on behalf of all, all of the housing groups, all the Concord entities with housing in their name, we are supportive of this amendment, even though it, it will no longer exempt affordable housing. We think that housing and the climate are on the, the same side of the equation. So the, myself as Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, along with the Chair of the Concord Housing Development Corporation, Concord Housing Authority, and Concord Housing Foundation, wrote a letter to the editor advising the public that we support this amendment, and we're happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, moving right along. Article 38, citizen petition to support a new cell tower.
You don't want to adjourn now?
Huh?
This might be long. Do you want to adjourn now?
No, we, we have 15 minutes to go. Okay, so this is 9:45, okay. Yes?
Hi.
Proceed.
Hi, I'm Alicia Boyagen, 77 Westford Road. Thank you. I just have a couple of, of pictures that were attachments in the memo. But since I've already submitted the detailed memo, I was hoping to just quickly point out the main points of each article and leave time for questions and comments. So I am a concerned citizen and parent. I've been following closely the cell tower conversations here in town for the past seven years or so. I've done my best, along with the generous help of residents, to discover and understand as much as possible the history, the process, and technical information by searching public records, reviewing various town board committee meeting minutes, and videos, speaking with town officials, and consulting with experienced telecommunication professionals. I'm open to incorporating any additional information and interpretations between now and town meeting. I also want to say that I appreciate the hard work and the challenges the town employees and board members have faced over the years in trying to improve cell coverage for our community. After going through the public records, I was really struck by how difficult and frustrating this process has been to expand the cellular network. So my hope in putting forth these two articles is to support and encourage the town in moving past obstacles toward good wireless communication solutions on town-owned properties. past obstacles toward good wireless communication solutions on town-owned properties. So the first article is Article 38, and it is to support our select board and our town manager in issuing requests for proposals to site a new cell tower at the landfill. And this is the landfill on Walden Street, near Walden Pond. The landfill parcel is a viable cell tower site despite some public perception that the site history might exclude it. The tower that was previously permitted and operated around 2001 at the landfill was only granted a temporary three-year lease. While there was vociferous opposition noted in the public records and in the news, that opposition did not uproot a long-term cell tower lease, but rather it just deterred a temporary tower from staying, and that was over 20 years ago. I think the most significant piece of historical information on the landfill site is that after the temporary tower was vacated from the landfill, the town voted twice via town meeting against placing the landfill parcel under conservation restrictions, indicating the parcel's continued value to our community for non-conservation public uses. The landfill parcel attributes are favorable to host a cell tower. The parcel is about 35 acres, with at least 10 acres having never been capped and free to be used for any purpose. A 2013 Mass DEP permit stated that to be only 16 acres were landfilled. But regardless, a cell tower would take up about a 50 by 50 footprint, that's 2,500 square feet, which is just .06 acres. So that's a tiny fraction of 10 or 20 acres. So, and I think I noted in the memo that generally we would be looking for solid ground for a cell tower and not a capped area. It would speed the processing, the permitting process, and just be generally a better idea. So there should be sufficient room for solar expansion and a cell tower to coexist at And the third really important point is we believe that a landfill tower would provide the improved cell coverage that our town is seeking. This is first based on the fact that a wireless facility did successfully operate from that location in 2001. I have a picture up here from a 2003 Town Commission RF analysis showing pretty great coverage. That red dot is the landfill site, and these are projected maps that the RF engineer put together back then. And then in 2023, just this past year, the town shared some additional RF analysis during the cell tower listening session. And first, they showed what coverage might look like at CCHS, and we added a little circle around the school. We also added a little, it's very difficult to see, but there is another circle. Maybe I need a pointer for town meeting. But the CCH tower would, you know, possibly leave a gap over Walden Beach. And then on the next slide, the coverage looks very, very similar, with Walden Beach being covered by a landfill tower compared to the CCHS tower. So I think those three pieces of evidence support that this tower would really help our cell coverage. And then finally, when comparing the landfill to CCHS as a potential site, the landfill seems to offer more benefits and fewer drawbacks. I won't sit here and read every single one, but you know, the first being that the CCHS campus would place the facility about 500 feet from the school building compared to a little more than a thou, well, way more than 1,000 feet actually from the school building and homes, while still providing coverage. So I think that's probably one of the most important points, but you know, the lease terms and revenue would be controlled only by the school committee if it goes on school property, as opposed to the town-owned property, which would allow the town to have much more control over the lease and the revenue that comes in from that. Places an attractive nuisance on an active campus near students and playing field versus putting it where there's less pedestrian traffic. At the dump, the frisbees will not likely accidentally land inside the fenced facility of the cell tower. The campus would remove, the campus tower would remove a portion of school grounds from educational use indefinitely and potentially limit immediate surrounding land use versus making use of, you know, productive use of land that already has a very limited future use because of its past development as a waste site. And then the last point about time is we really don't know what kind of time delays might be, might surround a campus tower versus the time constraints at the landfill being more tied to, you know, expected permitting processes. So, and I think having a town vote would support any application that gets put forward for the landfill. I think our local boards and any state permitting agencies would take into consideration strong community support, and this is why we're bringing this to town meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Mary?
I have a comment. First of all, thank you for the research and the professionalism of your presentation. I'm very impressed. I just want, I guess I'm a little bit confused about the expectation that we should have if this passes. Okay, because if I understand it, what you're doing is you're trying to get a sense for the town. Does the town overall support this location? And yet we know that there are other obstacles we could encounter, right? There could be some technical problem that we don't, or we can't get the providers to the table, even with this article.
Right.
Right? So...
Well, I guess I'm looking for support from the community on that. Our understanding was, as residents, this was the most affirmative step we could take at this point, issuing a request for proposals. Well, let me go back. I know when, a couple of years ago, when a request for proposals was issued for Kai's Road, Verizon did not respond, which was, everybody was hoping. We did have tower companies respond, but lo and behold, a little while after, Verizon did come and look more closely at Kai's Road.
Okay. I'm not sure why they didn't respond. I'm just cautioning us to set the right expectations with this. And it might, it's definitely a step in the right direction, but it might not get us past the goalpost. That's all, that's all I'm...
Right.
So it's a good, it's a great idea. I actually support it, and I think it's good to hear from the town what they think, but there are other considerations as well.
Right. I guess in looking back over the history in the public files, it seems to be some of the biggest roadblocks are going before all of these boards permitting processes, and we don't have, we haven't garnered, well, not always, but...
Not always.
Yes, not always.
We do know that sometimes, we do have support, we do have sites, and we just can't, can't get the vendor, we can't come to an agreement. So I just want to, I just, again, when you're presenting this to the town, make sure that, or I'm suggesting, what are the right expectations? It's not like, once we get this passed, then all of a sudden it will breeze through the process, because it's sticky. This is definitely a good step in the right direction. So I don't want to discourage you, but it's just the beginning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
Hi, it's Wendy Raveli. I just had a question on your coverage slide, because I'm remembering in the, in the listening session, it started with, here's a picture of the town, and here's our coverage gap, and it clearly is downtown, and it clearly was the campus. But when you put the landfill location up, I thought that the listening session said it did not cover the campus.
Yeah, that was confusing, because the, if you can go back to that. So at the listening session, they did have a big circle around that, that black area, which is along Route 2. I'm gonna need a pointer, definitely, but there's a large black area along, yes, along Route 2. That was circled, and that is a gap. In previous, in the previous analysis, if you go back to the 2003, the landfill site doesn't have as big of a gap. So one thing is, we've learned from reading the FCC files and talking to telecommunications people, these maps are not perfect. There are tools, the parameters, the input parameters change with, depending on who's creating them. And really, to get an accurate sense if a cell tower will work, it was suggested that you send up an antenna during a balloon test, you project out the signal, and then you measure the signal in the desired coverage areas. So we are combining all of the data and all of us looking at it. We see good coverage. And Jason did say during the lesson, listening session on 10/19, it would help the coverage on the school campus for sure.
Yeah, it just wouldn't solve their whole problem. And so I guess my only other second comment was, in preparation for town meeting, if you could give a better idea on the landfill site, where you thought that would be, that would be beneficial, and then talk to the DPW about what implications that has for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephen?
The landfill site that's not capped is a depression, and so, except by the entrance, which is at grade, Walden Street grade, so presumably you've got to go up above the bowl that it's sitting in. My question is, how high? And is that a concern for the state with Walden Pond next door, or not? Or is that not a factor from your analysis?
So I'm not going to venture to dive too deep into the site analysis. That would be for the engineer, but you're right, depressions are not as good as elevations. But there are, so the previous tower operated closer to the wall, maps will definitely be helpful, but closer to the Walden Woods line on higher ground. There is a raised area on that corner, right on the corner of Route 2 and Walden. Even though a couple of hundred feet beyond that, it does dip down. So that would be a question that we'd have to explore with some experienced site engineers, but they're very clever, the wireless companies, and they have sighted towers in precarious, what appears to be precarious situations. So I'm hopeful that they could find an area that would work for everybody. The second article is Article 39, similar concept. This is at Kai's Road, and I know that there are current private negotiations happening now that we don't have information about that may solve the problem for the Concord Center area. So this Kai's Road solution would be helpful if that private negotiation does not come through, but also in thinking about the future. I have no idea what the private sites will offer as far as co-location and having room for additional providers that may need coverage. So I think it's smart to, for the town to prepare and have a plan ready. So just the history of Kai's Road, 2006, Team Mobile and OmniPoint applied to site a tower there, and that application was denied a certificate of appropriateness by one of the historical boards. 2019, two separate tower building companies responded to the town's RFP with some different options for multi-provider sites. Then at the end of 2021, beginning of 2022, Verizon did formally assess the Kai's Road site, including a balloon test, which is shown here in Attachment A. I actually can't see the balloon at all. I can't find it. And they also provided a projected coverage map, which I'll show in a minute, but both the balloon test and the coverage map, this time yielded very positive interpretations. So hopeful, again, that the site would be supported this time around. A tower in the public works yard would provide the improved cell coverage that our town is seeking, again, based on some information from that 2003 Town Commission RF analysis. This map is a little more confusing, but it has other sites on it, but the one in the very center is Kai's Road. In 2018, there was another Town Commission RF analysis that was done, and that was shared at a select board meeting. The top picture is what it would look like with a Kai's Road tower, and the one below is the existing Verizon coverage, so... And then finally, the most recent map from Verizon, which shows quite complete coverage, actually, reaching all the way down, almost to the edge, actually to the edge of the high school campus. So again, Kai's Road is a really hopeful site that, in combination with something at the landfill, would solve our communication issues, while I think offering the best option we have at putting them in places that are set back from homes and schools. So I'm hopeful.
Yes? Question? Do we have any?
We do.
Questions or comments? Mark?
Mark Martinez. So I think a lot of people think Kai's Roads is a great option. My understanding, though, is that the National Park Service would have to sign off on it.
They would, and that balloon test would be one of the pieces of information that they would like to see. And I believe at that time, they, the National Parks, Kate Hodges was the Assistant Town Manager, and she had a meeting with them, and they were not alarmed by that balloon test, so...
What year was that?
It was just in 2021, beginning of 2022.
So have you coordinated with the town officials, looking at Kai's Road as an option, and sort of, what's the resistance? In other words, it's just a, you know, is it just a matter of sort of, let's get moving on this, and no one's decided to move on it yet? Or, I'm a little puzzled as to, if we can figure this out with a balloon test, why we haven't done a balloon test? And if it's not a big deal for the National Park Service, it would be great to get them on record to say, because I think the downtown area is a major problem, including for the 2025 celebration.
Right.
And it seems like we've just been spinning our wheels for 18 months, 24 months. And I'm a little bit surprised, I guess, that Kai's Roads is possibly as simple a solution as, you know, we're hearing about.
Oh, good. I see Jason Bolger, who I was just gonna say, he might have a better answer, but I know part of the issue is, is the wireless companies have to be in, working with us. And the site history has, is complicated and has scared off some wireless providers.
Hi, Jason Bolger, Chief Technology Officer. I was peripherally involved in some of those balloon tests that were happening at that time with Kate and the town manager at the time. I think a good plan would be to sort of take a lot of this analysis and information and synthesize it through the lens of the people that were involved in some of those things, so that we could provide sort of some background information that would help. I think, you know, the Kai's Road campus is already sort of at max capacity for the use that they need there. They were very concerned with what the impact would be with the towers. There was an RFP that was issued and then rescinded because it was going to have too much of an impact on the vehicles and the use at the present time, and then when it was reissued, they had similar concerns. was reissued, they had similar concerns. The balloon tests, there are other balloon tests. You can clearly see, it was a red balloon, so it's obviously hard to see on a projector, but the National Park Service didn't say that they were not concerned, they just said they weren't alarmed, but that is a process. So we have kind of background of, as to all those things, you know, the select board gave us the charge to find sort of the best sites, and those sites were the ones with the best coverage, and those were the ones that could be developed most quickly. The Kai's Road campus has a lot of other issues, endangered species, wetlands at the confluence of multiple trails, so, and it is within 1,000 feet of residences and schools within Concord Academy. So when you're looking at all of the things in the bylaw, that's why it was not sort of the top site, but it's still under consideration, and I think this is not a bad avenue to pursue. But as you mentioned, there are other opportunities in the downtown area that would provide coverage. The other thing I'll mention about the coverage maps, the old ones, remember that as newer generations of technology come out, they use different frequencies, so an older coverage map might be completely invalid today. It might show a broader area and reach, and that's because it used a lower frequency that actually propagated further. So you want to make sure that you're using whatever technology the actual carriers would use today.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this?
I just have a follow-up comment. So, you know, we are, you know, what is it, 14 months from a huge celebration in this town, and I just, I'm puzzled by the desire, or even the acquiescence to study this further, and why we're still talking about possible sites at the high school, or going to the dump, or Kai's Road. You know, we're in a situation where, you know, some of our, you know, fire, police can't even use cell phones. So I guess one concern I have is that by, maybe this will be great to sort of ignite a fire, but if it's not igniting a fire, and it's not a solving solution, particularly in downtown, I'm scratching my head as to, you know, how this makes comprehensive sense to get a cell coverage in a place where we desperately need it.
Thank you. Do we have a comment on this? Yes.
Hi, yeah, my name is Gail Hyer. I live at 54 Nancy Road. I guess I'm an attorney, I do environmental permitting, not telecommunications permitting, but I think one of the reasons that we got this idea is, you know, this is not a study committee proposal. This is issue an RFP. It's the first step in bringing people to the table, and the town should take charge of municipal property. You know, we can wait till the cows come home for private organizations to get together and people, you know, rent property, you know, rent space in their private land, but they might change their mind, they might take the tower down, and the town won't have any control over that. So we wanted the town to take action, we thought an RFP proposal was the best way to do that, and if it doesn't work, and if people, you know, the carriers don't want the sites, then it's time to move on. But we just really felt like this was the best way to get something moving, and I was shocked when I found that the balloon test in a select board meeting from March of 2022, that was two years ago, and at that time, the select board said, well, there's someone had told, had informed the select board that there was a private entity, you know, about to reach an agreement in town. Well, two years later, there's no agreement, there's no new tower, and we're still waiting. So that's really the impetus behind this, these proposed articles.
Thank you. Anything else? And do I hear a motion to, not to adjourn, but to continue this hearing, or I should say adjourn this hearing to our March 4 hearing after the public hearing that is scheduled for 7 o'clock on that agenda? So moved?
Yep.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then we will also adjourn this meeting.
Oh, yes.
We adjourn this meeting, and...
Move to adjourn, select board meeting?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and so we'll take up the remaining items next week.